Try and hold the invocation until after the roll call. Can we go ahead with the pledge of allegiance?
Want to do the roll call to start the meeting, or?
Well, the pledge of allegiance is first, but whatever your pleasure is. Right, our chaplain's not here. I just said our chaplain isn't here yet, so let's go ahead. Let's go ahead with the roll call, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. This is the Tuesday, October 25th, regular meeting of the City of South Fulton City Council. It's a roll call. The Honorable Catherine F. Ryle, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gums, District Two. The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five. And the Honorable Natasha Williams, District Six.
Present.
And the Honorable Mayor Khalid.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
All right, would you go ahead and continue with the pledge of allegiance?
Okay, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Mayor, can I take a personal point of privilege?
Uh, one, one moment. We're going to go ahead and do this. Well, go ahead, Councilwoman. Is this?
You want to do the invocation?
Yeah, I was trying to wait for our chaplain to get here, to get here, but while we wait for them, I do want to take a moment. We did this in our special call meeting last week, but we have suffered more tragedies since then in the City of South Fulton, so first, I would like for us, I would like for us to take a moment of silence for two people. One is a young father, Mr. Snelling, who was murdered in his car in one of our subdivisions off of Flat Shoals Road. And the second is the Harris-Adams family who lost several members in a horrible house fire that many of you probably saw off Oswego Lane in District Three. And last, but not least, our, our own finance staff, Ms. Carrie Sorrels, who lost her brother, who was an amazing firefighter, down in Coweta, I believe. So if we could just now take a moment in prayer for those families. Thank you. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for our ability to gather today. We have a contentious meeting. A contentious agenda. I ask that you send your Spirit to sit on each of our tongues so that we might debate and disagree without being disagreeable and find common ground in the best interests of the city that we all so dearly love. In your mighty and matchless name, I pray, amen.
Amen.
Our city chaplain is here to give us the official invocation. Go ahead, sir.
Let's bow our heads in humility to the Creator of the heavens and the earth. And close our eyes to the wickedness of this world and seek for God's pleasure as we pray. In the most holy name of God, thee be neferent, the most merciful. All praises are due to God, the Lord of all the worlds. Thee be neferent, the most merciful. Master of this day of judgment in which we now live. Thee do we serve, and thee alone do we proceed for your help. O God, guide us on the straight path. The path and thou bestow favors upon. Not the path and wrath that been brought down, nor those who go astray. O Allah, God, we pray that you descend your peace upon the mayor and council this evening. And we pray that you give them the spirit of true brotherhood and true sisterhood and unity. We pray that you bless them to do the will of you, O God, and the will of their constituents. And we pray that we bless them with our presence today as their constituents to show them that our community wants to be one and remove from them any divisiveness, any contention, any hatred, but replace it with the spirit of love for each other and love for this city. And, O God, we say a special prayer for those who lost their lives. One who lost a young father, lost his life being murdered while he was in his car on Flat Shoals. So we pray for the Snelling family. We pray for the Harris and Adam family who lost members in that major fire last week. And we pray for the Sorrells family, the firefighter and the brother of the staff member we lost last week. O God, bless us to pray for each other instead of praying on each other. In the name of Christ and all the prophets of God, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Councilwoman Gums, you asked for a point of personal privilege.
Yes, can you hear me? Oh, I can hear. I wanted to pretty much let you all know, of course, today, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Black women are twice as likely to be diagnosed with triple negative breast cancer than white women. And they're also thirty percent more likely to die from these tumors because of low rates of surgery and chemotherapy. So today, in honor of Breast Cancer Month, and for those that have-
Hold, hold one second. Could we have order in the room? I do want, do we just need everybody to get seated? Could you just hold your comments, because I don't want anybody to miss this, Councilwoman Gums. This is very important.
Okay. You want to start, or?
Go ahead. You can, you can start again, please.
All right, so October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I wanted to share some statistics. Black women are twice as likely to be diagnosed with triple negative breast cancer than white women. They're also thirty percent more likely to die from these tumors because of low rates of surgery and chemotherapy. Wanted to share, we all want to make sure that we recognize, I know everybody in this room may have lost someone from breast cancer, and it's just not affecting black women, but it also affects our black men as well. So in honor of breast cancer survivors and those that we have lost, the council is in pink, pretty in pink. We also have our gentlemen that are wearing pink ties, and Corey has on a pink shirt. So thank you, Mr. Reeves, for participating, and all of the staff and the clerks. So thank you so much. Please make sure you say a small prayer for those that are struggling through breast cancer, and make sure you continue to educate yourself. Go get your checkups, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gums. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
This is Mayor and Council. We are on Roman numeral five. It's adoption of the council agenda.
I will entertain a motion. Councilwoman Willis?
I think my colleagues have some others, but I would just like to move council comments up to after the public comments. And then, are you all going to add these on?
Okay.
There are other amendments.
All right, Council, Dr. Ryle?
I would like to amend the agenda to add a resolution to authorize the city to apply for the City Urban Agriculture Planning Grant through the Atlanta Regional Commission and Foodwell Alliance, right before item ten. After council comments.
And, wait.
Councilwoman Gums, you want me to add? Want me to say your?
I'm trying to figure out where.
This is, this is item, you said before item ten?
Yes, after the council comment.
Okay, so you all don't want council comments after public comment?
And then, the resolution.
Resolution we were just handed now for?
To apply for a grant.
The urban ag grant. All right, and is there? Yes.
So I would like to add a first read for the ordinance adopting the reform. It's actually the amendment, it's a little ordinance. So I would like to add that for a first read under public works.
So that would be item? Twenty-three?
Number twenty-three.
Hello?
Okay. Are there any other amendments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I am not comfortable with item number eleven, the discussion around P-cards especially. We, I think we have some investigations going on around P-cards. I'm not sure what we're gonna be discussing there, but I'm, I do not think we should be discussing this, given that there's some investigations happening. I think that process need to be, to run its course, right? I have no issue discussing the forensic and the internal audits or auditors, whatever, but I certainly am not comfortable with us having any discussions around P-cards. So if we cannot split those, I'll move to strike number eleven from the, from the agenda at this time.
All right, anything else? Okay. I would like to. Well, we can vote on all these together, but I have discussion about some of these. The, these resolutions and ordinances that are being added to the agenda, when did you receive those, Mr. Adams?
You got that? The, the, I know the grant item, we received that, I believe, on Monday, yesterday. And the litter ordinance, I know the due date in the legislative process was the nineteenth, so I'm gonna assume it was seven days for that, probably the twelfth, that we received the first read of the litter ordinance. Mr. Pastor's looking up the exact date.
So you're saying we had a first read already?
No, the, the, it was entered into the legislative process on or about October twelfth, and it's for first read.
Okay, we have a, I've had some criticism from this council and others that we don't get our agendas out on time. So we moved up our agenda date to Tuesday, seven days before this meeting, and the deadline, that would have been the eighteenth, and the deadline to enter these items was Monday, the seventeenth. Is there any reason that you know that these were not presented at our meeting on Tuesday, the eighteenth, when we set this agenda?
Yes, sir. Actually, the litter, first read of the litter ordinance was on the draft that I submitted to you, but it was not on your final draft that you returned. And the grant, I understand there's some emergency circumstances regarding it, and we received that on yesterday. And I think Councilmember Ryle can speak to the urgency.
Yeah, Dr. Ryle, would you tell us about that?
As you know, most grant applications have a deadline. The application workshop for technical assistance was last Monday, and so I did not want us to miss this opportunity to implement initiative that's outlined in our comprehensive development plan, action plan. So hopefully, we'll be successful in securing this grant.
Well, that is definitely a reason, and my apologies, Councilwoman Gums, I don't know how that fell off the agenda. I just wanted to understand why they were there. And then lastly, I had a, I attended a very informative Roberts Rules training in which I learned that the only person that can remove an item from the agenda is the person who put it on the agenda. Mr. Hyman, you are our city attorney and our parliamentarian. Could you opine to the legality of someone other than the person who puts something on the agenda being able to remove something from the agenda?
Mayor, I wouldn't offer an opinion at this point. I'll do something writing, but I can tell you what the council and the body's been traveling under, which is your ordinance, which is one, section one, that's three zero zero two, G two, that allows council members, which place an item, it allows for during the adoption period of the agenda for them to, under Roberts Rule, to amend the agenda. I don't know particularly what rule or agenda, but if you provide that to me, then I can offer you an opinion later on, but.
So that, the ordinance that you cited allows council members to add items to the agenda. There's nothing in that ordinance that speaks to them being able to remove items from the agenda. As parliamentarian, could you cite authority in Roberts Rules that allows someone other than the presenter of an item on the agenda to remove said item from the agenda?
Also, Mayor, under the same ordinance, one oh three E, there is, the section indicates agenda items, only, only council member who places an item on the council agenda may remove them, that is, present our ordinance.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and strike the request to remove an item number eleven, and we can?
Mr. Mayor, I have a further comment.
Yes, Councilman Sebastian.
Mr. Mayor, the item eleven that involved investigation with P-cards, it really involves staff. Attorney Hyman, does counsel fall under the definition of staff? Attorney Hyman, when you finish. Can you answer that question, please?
Would you read?
Does man counsel fall under the definition of staff for a city?
Your elected officials, answerable to the collective public.
So if there are items that involve any individual or individuals that cause it an, an investigation to happen, where those items are normally handled within executive session, would it be okay to have a discussion involving elected officials publicly and not do it within, within executive session when an active investigation is going on?
I would not recommend it.
I, I just want to follow up, because we actually had this conversation when I asked whether or not City Council would get, we, we were talking about these three sixty reviews, performance evaluations, and when I asked if City Council would be subjected to performance evaluations by their staff, I was told then that City Council are not employees. Have you changed your position? Are City Council employees? If so, we need to get those performance evaluations out to our staff of our council.
I didn't understand that to be the same question.
Are City Council, are City Council members employees?
I gave, well, there's a memo on that that I can refer you to, but that's already been answered. His question was about whether or not the efficacy of disclosing something that's pending, pending an investigation.
No, I'm asking if, if City Council members are employees. That was the first question that, that Councilman Sebastian asked.
I will recirculate that memo, because there was legal advice.
Right, and it, and it, that memo did say that they were not. And again, we do have an ordinance that says only members, the only person that can remove an item is a, is the person who made the item. So I am not going, I am not yielding to remove the item. I think that, I think that it's a discussion that we need to have. It's been, it's been happening on next door and telephone conversations, so let's have it.
Mr. Mayor, if I can finally say one thing. It's okay for people-
You've actually spoken twice, sir, so I'm, I'm gonna call for the, I'm gonna call for the votes now.
I'm good.
I'm gonna call for the vote to approve the agenda as amended, adding council comments as Roman numeral number ten. The resolution for urban ag as the first item, I'm gonna say seven A. And the first read of the, the first read of the amendment, the ordinance for litter as number twenty-three. It's been properly moved? Well, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's roll call vote. We have a motion by Councilmember Gums, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Reeves to approve the three items as stated by the mayor. It's roll call vote. Councilmember Ryle?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
The agenda has been approved as amended.
All right, would you please sound the next item?
Next item is Roman numeral six, approval of City Council meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes from September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. City Council work session minutes from October eleventh, twenty-twenty-two. Alcohol zoning public hearing minutes from October eleventh, twenty-twenty-two. And special call meeting minutes from October eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, and October twentieth, twenty-twenty-two.
I move that we approved the regular council mental, council regular meetings from September twenty-seventh. The work session minutes from October eleventh, city council zoning hearing from October eleventh, and city council special call minutes from October eleventh and twentieth.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Ryle?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis? Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Those minutes were approved unanimously.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is Roman numeral seven, consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we have five proclamations for spreading on the minutes.
I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I moved it. I moved it, second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis? Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
That item was approved unanimously.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
We're in the Roman numeral eight, number six. It's a public proclamation presentation to the retired South Fulton educators. It's sponsored by Mayor Khalid and the full council.
All right, I think we have some South Fulton educators in the room. It's on now. Got it. Tomorrow night, one of my favorite television shows comes on. It is Abbott Elementary, for those of you all who are fans. I have several friends who are teachers, and I asked them, because the show is hilarious, but it, it makes me concerned about our public education system. And I, and I asked them if, if the show is true to life, and they tell me that it is very much so. And so, I cannot think of anyone that has a tougher job than educators in our system that are, in our public schools, that are educating our young people who are our futures. So, first, would everyone just stand and give a round of applause, not only to these educators, but to all of our teachers here in South Fulton? Thank you. And I'm gonna read this proclamation. Whereas, the city of South Fulton, Georgia seeks to acknowledge the indomitable Georgia Retired Educators Association as a stalwart and fixture in our South Fulton community and the broader collective. And whereas, the Georgia Retired Educators Association, beginning in 1958, as the Georgia Retired Teachers Association, has evolved through 47 years of specialization and diversity of educational roles with the objective of promoting economic, social, professional status of retired educators, promoting the passage of legislation to benefit them, promote advancement of high-quality education, promote involvement in community service and decision-making in the state and local communities, to present the image as one of dignity and independence, and encourage active educators to begin retirement preparation well in advance of retiring. And whereas, there are more than 135,000 retired educators in Georgia, 32,000 plus of whom are members of the Georgia Retired Educators Association, and due to the positive impact that educators, as well as retired educators, have made in the lives of those within South Fulton's diaspora, it is duly appropriate and to publicly acknowledge and appreciate the contributions made by these aforementioned. And whereas, the city of South Fulton recognizes the sacrifices teachers make to provide education pouring into the lives of our youth, that they could be prepared for the future, joins not only state leaders, but Georgia Governor Brian Kemp, who has also proclaimed November 6 as Retired Educators Day in the state of Georgia. Please forgive any typos that you see in this proclamation. We will, I know that you will find them, and we will get you a corrected copy now. Now, therefore, being resolved, that the mayor and the entire city council of the city of South Fulton do hereby proclaim Sunday, November 6, 2022, as Retired Educators Day here in the city of South Fulton.
She got the speech prepared?
Yes, indeed. I would just like for you to allow me just a few minutes to thank my mayor, Mayor Khalid Kamu, our chief of staff, yeah, let's give him a hand. Our chief of staff, Ms. Keisha Dixon, and the entire council for their support of our Retired Educators Day. We applaud you for our proclamation being presented here at this council meeting. We are very impressed by that. I want each of you to know that this day is a very special day for any teacher who would love to stand in my shoes at the city council meeting, where his or her teacher, former student, that is, is the mayor of this great city. Let's give our mayor a hand. This is the city where we live, and the city that has risen to claim the position of the, one of the fastest-growing cities in the state of Georgia. My heart overflows with joy, and I am forever grateful to all of you for all that you all have done. Congratulations to my mayor, Mayor Kamu. Keep on doing the good work. And I don't see, my other student, Keisha Dixon. Oh, okay, wonderful. Now, as I look back at my former student, who is the chief of staff, Ms. Keisha Dixon, another one of my former high school outstanding students who excelled in all positions of leadership as well, this is one of the greatest feelings for a teacher to be able to stand here and see her students in these major roles, top leadership positions. What else could I expect from these two individuals? They were incredibly smart in school, outstanding leaders, and were very intelligent beyond the high school career during the time that they were there. They were really outstanding individuals, and we are so glad to see them. They were the tops in their class at that time, and I still see them moving forward. May God continue to bless each and every one of you, and I ask you to continue to make our city, the South Fulton, shine.
Want to say thank you. I'm Helen Kelly, a former teacher in the South Fulton. And if I have anyone here, I taught primarily kindergarten, first grade. Of course, I've been retired 22 years, so I wouldn't recognize you. We are the local unit of the Georgia Association of Educators, and our mission is to unite retired educators in Georgia in continuing fellowship, service, and support to our fellow educators who are still out there in the field, and to improve our benefits through being retired, through our cooperation with the local, the state, and the national organizations. And one of our main active, uh, community services that we do, give scholarships back. We give back. We give scholarships to a high school student, and we give scholarships to someone who's going into education as well. So, we try to be a support and be on the battlefield for those who are still working in the vineyard. Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we are at Roman numeral nine, public comment. Do you want me to read the rules of public comment, or did you want to address it?
Yeah, yeah. Before, before he reads the rules, I, I do understand that we have a large number of public comments. There are lots of people here to make public comment. I think we have like 50-something cards. Is that correct, Mr. Adams?
We actually have closer to 35.
35?
Yes.
All right. So, some of the cards, we, we have two public comment periods today. One is just general public comment about the items that are on the agenda. As the clerk will remind you, you can only talk about an item that is on the agenda, so please make sure that you reference whichever agenda item that you are talking about. And the second set of public comments is for considering reopening Jack in Our Lane. So, I want you to understand, we are going to start with the public comments that are not about Jack in Our Lane. If you are here to talk about Jack in Our Lane, we will have a public hearing just before intermission around 6 o'clock. And if you do not hear your name called now, your name will be called for that Jack in Our Lane reconsideration. We want to make sure that everyone who came to talk about something else will get to have their public comments read, because we have an entirely separate public comment session just about Jack in Our Lane. And with that, Mr. Clerk, would you go ahead and read the rules?
Yes, good evening. Members of the general public wishing to make public comment at City of South Fulton City Council meeting must be residents of the city of South Fulton, except for county, state, federal elected officials should be allowed to speak regardless of city of residence. Comments should be limited to two minutes per speaker. Public comments should be limited to only those items appearing on the current city council meeting agenda. Each speaker must complete and submit a request to speak form in its entirety prior to the beginning of the meeting. The person desiring to speak should rise, address the city council, and when recognized, state their name, address, the agenda item they are addressing, and the city council district in which they reside. All remarks should, shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member. Speakers may not employ obscenities or threats of violence in their comments. Speakers may not use public comments to campaign for public office, political office, either for themselves or on behalf of other candidates, for the purpose of limiting political influence on city employees and encouraging orderly and efficient meetings. With that, and the mayor's, mayor's instructions there, I will call your name, if you would come to the center mic and state your name, address, and district. The first three speakers will be Laura Stanley, Drew Deman, Richard Snellings, Connie Robinson. If you would please come in, you have two minutes. Drew Deman, Richard Snellings, Connie Robinson, Coretta Prescott, Shonda Clark.
All right, I'm Drew Deman. I reside at 4640 Gordon Street in the Fife Community in the 7th District. Greetings, council, greetings, mayor. My comment is regarding the location of the police office, the temporary location of the police office up by Hartsfield-Jackson Airport. And I hope to offer some constructive information for y'all. In the last few months, I've had a lot of occasions to speak with people regarding police issues, desires for the type of police action and service that people would like to have in their communities all over the city. And let me say, first of all, that the City of South Fulton Police Department has been doing a really good job in general of keeping us safe, and our, and crime in the city is actually down, consistently down over the last three years compared to other places. That's a win. And, but I, I just wanna, you know, because this location of this police office building is contentious, I think it's important to tease out some of the, some of the details. And I, I spent some time looking at the International Association of Chiefs of Police website, which I think is, you know, really instructive. And there's a whole process that they delineate about steps that communities should take when assessing when to build or move a police facility. And a lot of it involves a lot of community oversight and community involvement. So, let's make sure that as we move forward with this needed transformation of the building for the police headquarters, that we get a lot of community input. One of the things that's really, that I would really love for y'all to hear, and I heard recently from a resident in the 7th District, is that we want to have police in our communities, and I quote, "But we don't want to be policed." Thank you.
Richard Snellings, Connie Robinson, Karen McGeehan, Coretta Prescott.
Hello, my name is Richard Snellings. I reside in District One, 1980 Lockloman Trail, City of South Fulton. And my comment is, it is absolutely shameful how this council tried to circumvent the public comments by placing the police sublease on a special call meeting, because you knew we didn't support it, and you knew, and we're here now not supporting it. Pandora's box is now open. What a great, what a great time to discuss these P card statements. When I reviewed the P card statements, I took note of a couple items. The first thing I wanted to make mention of is, when I reviewed Councilwoman Gums' P card statement, it reflects someone's college tuition being paid. The support to private organizations was also on her P card, and there was also excessive entertainment spending on the P card. We also noticed there was no referral to the DA for that. I also, I also thought about how Councilwoman Ral and Williams' statements reflected they were having meals together at hotels in the Atlanta area. Of course, we saw no referrals to the DA for that. Now, you may remember that beautiful multi-page spread that Councilwoman Willis did with Councilwoman Gums and Ral. I saw the charges on the P card statement for that as well, $1,700 to be exact. The DA knew nothing about that. The council said that these referrals were in the spirit of transparency. Well, if that's the case, why did they only refer their enemies to the DA? There is, there is something to be said about folks who are so vindictive that they attempt to jeopardize someone's freedom and livelihood. A review of the performance of the council will reveal bad decisions, selfishness, and bad attitudes. You waste our money with these, with these Bill Edwards flyers, but have the audacity to refer someone to the DA for political retribution. You do not deserve to have a communications department. Your job is to make policy, not dictate hiring decisions, even if they are temporary employees. You should not be wasting my money on a portion of a floor in some luxury office building in Atlanta. I know you said this is a temporary solution, but this is a permanent waste of our money. Thank you.
Connie, Connie Robinson, Karen McGeehan, Coretta Prescott, Shonda Clark.
Hello, and thank you for listening to me today. My name's Karen McGinn, and I live at 4600 Elgin Street. My topic is, again, the police location. I'm thinking that if we're going to spend $21,000 a week to the city of Atlanta, that I'd like to see that money come in to South Fulton. I also agree with Richard on the fact that I want to see the police be a vital part of our community. At 72 years of age, I've lived in many communities with many different integrations or lack thereof of the police department. I think it's an opportunity for us as a baby city, or kindergarten, five-year-old city, to create something that's a standout. And I believe having our city, I mean, our police be a vital part of our city, integrated... integrated with us, so we view them as protectors and not enforcers, and be participating with the schools and meeting young people, which is, and, and sitting down for coffee with them at coffee houses. I want to see them integrated in that way. There's so many things that i- in our country right now that are disruptive and separating. I don't want this police force separated from us. I want them integrated wi- uh, with us so we can all support each other and be a community. Thank you.
Connie Roberts- Robinson, Coret Prescott, Shonda Clark, Joyce Jones, Pamela Harris, Germaine Bryant, Yufi Dow, and Naima Gilyard. Are any of those persons present? If you please approach the center mic.
Speaking to the mic, Ms. Mama Joyce, thank you.
Hi, I'm Joyce Jones. I'm, I live on New Hope Road, South Fulton. And I want to address the police department, department being moved from, uh, I want to address the police department being moved from South Fulton to the airport. I think that it really don't make sense, for one thing, for us to pay twenty-one thousand dollars a month to the City of Atlanta where we could pay, uh, less than twenty-one thousand to have the building on Old National being repaired. And for one thing, I would like to know, have the building been repaired? And who, who inspected the building on Old National? For the mold? You all said that it was mold. Who, what company inspected the building? I drove by the Old National Building, and I saw that it was a sign saying that the building was for sale. How you gonna, uh, uh, sell a building that has mold in it? That's against the law. So, if the building is, uh, have mold, you can't sell it. And my other thing is about the P-cards. You all getting five thousand dollars a month, I mean, five thousand a month for P-cards, that's more than the average person has a month to live. And you all squandering five thousand dollars a month each on P-cards to do at your discretion. I think that's a deplorable for all these old people that can't hardly live or eat. And I think you all need to think about it. I think if we gonna send the police department to Atlanta, maybe we should send the whole city back to Atlanta and start all over again with a new city, a new council, a new mayor, and just start all over again. Because you all are not doing a good job with the city of South Fulton.
Are we at capacity? Are we at capacity? Because there are residents that are outside.
I understand that there are some residents that are outside. We are unfortunately at capacity at this moment. We will ask, uh, those people to just watch on YouTube and perhaps, uh, they'll, we usually have a little exodus after public comment. So, if you're, if you're willing to be patient out, outside as people leave, you may be able to come in. Go ahead, thank you.
Germaine Bryant, Sabre Glenn, uh, Fifth District, uh, have several different, uh, topics they want to cover. Uh, first is veto. This, all these make, number of veto, vetoes are over fifty percent of what the, uh, agenda is for the whole day. When you, when the majority of, uh, South Fulton is voting for a particular mayor and they, they like what the mayor's ideals are, and you want to veto everything he says, that means that you, uh, veto every, all our votes. You said our votes don't worth anything until we're ready to vote for you. Uh, virtual meetings, you want to have bring in vote, virtual meetings because under emergency order. But if it's emergency, why nobody has a, uh, mayor mask? If it's emergency, that disallows that whole thing. Uh, this investigation, why hasn't any action been taken after the results of the investigation that Smyrna did? Nothing's been done. If you don't want anything done, it's because you're complicit in it. Then that's the problem that I have. Uh, this garbage contract, I never heard a contract that has automatic raises for four years and, uh, tied to the cost of living, but the cost of living goes down, it does, their, their income doesn't go down. I'd like to know who comes up with a contract like that and says, "That's good for you." Did the, did the business give you the contract, said, "This is what we gonna do," and you went for it? That's the only way I can see that happening. Now, a lot of people are waiting for the next two elections to, uh, change who are in your, your positions right now. But I, my personal belief is, it's time for a recall, not waiting for the next two election because I don't see this council doing anything but against the, what the majority of these voters voted. And I can't thank you.
Next is Yufi Dow and Naima Gilyard.
Uh, I, I just want to make a brief reminder. The, uh, sanitation contract has been removed from this agenda. It will be on the November fifteenth agenda. So, any com- any comments that you have about the sanitation or sanit- sanitation contract or citywide garbage collection, if you would please, uh, save those till November fifteenth. We will do this all again on November fifteenth, and, and we will hear those comments at that time. Go ahead, I'm sorry about that.
Coretta Prescott Sturdevent, um, Enon Pines, District Number One. With all the negative press about the police department, why would any of you want to vote for them to move further away from the city unsupervised? Corruption and misconduct plagues our department, and you all see it fit to allow them to move in a new building that costs twenty-one thousand dollars a month? Please make it make sense. The mayor exposed misconduct and received a vote of no confidence. You all called him a liar, then the Smyrna report was released. No one wants to acknowledge it because it confirms that the mayor was telling the truth. It also exposed more corruption and problems within the department. Where's the chief vote of no confidence? Better yet, why isn't he fired? Why hasn't the city manager fired him? Well, I get the feeling that, hold on. I got a lot. I get the feeling she can't do her job for fair retaliation. This current administration has failed us. The department needs to be cleaned out, starting with the chief. I have no faith in his ability to run the department. And now you all want to move outside city limits? Absolutely not. Thank you, Mayor, for being the only city government official to tell the truth. The city, the city council really needs to do their job by letting others do theirs and serve the people, not their own agenda. It seems like we have dictators instead of representatives. We didn't vote y'all into office to turn into Hitler, Castro, Saddam, or Putin. I guess the constituents' input doesn't count. I guess we should follow Councilman Sebastian's advice and take a chill pill. Either brownie or smoke some legal weed. Or, we could call or email our councilperson to voice our opinion, but for what? When y'all have already made up y'all minds what y'all gonna do? From the outside looking in, we don't have a council, we have puppets and a puppet master.
Pamela Harris, Shonda Clark, Yufi Dow, and Naima Gilyard.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Pamela Harris, Moncler Estates. Um, my comment was regarding the adoption of the October twentieth special call meeting and the city manager's report. How many residents are aware that the homes have been threatened with foreclosure or overdue, uh, for overdue trash bills? Are you aware that the plan?
I'm sorry, I have to, I have to interrupt you. We, we, the city council has passed these rules. We can only talk about what's on the agenda, so.
Okay, well, I, I, I'll say, uh, this. In addition, I don't think that we should move. And I'd like to know, what company actually said that there was mold in, in the facility on Old National Highway? The facility is for sale, so are you selling a building that has mold? Uh, does the realtor know it? Will the potential buyers know it? I think that the police station should remain in the City of South Fulton. Twenty-one thousand dollars a month is excessive, and I don't like it, and I don't think anybody else does. Thank you.
Just, just, we're, we're going to continue with these public comments. Just a quick point of information, however, we, we are not selling the building. We never owned the building on Old National, and we are not selling it. That is a private business matter. Councilwoman Emeritus Naima Gilyard, thank you so much for joining us today.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being our mayor. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Brother Mohammed. You have reminded us that no matter what we do, we supposed to love each other. And I want y'all to know, you make it difficult, but I gotta love you. You make it difficult, though, for lo- so many reasons. Many that you heard this evening and many you're gonna hear, you know, as you go through whatever this is that you're going through. So, I need another second because I didn't prepare for that. But anyway, citizens were to have meaningful input in revising the comp plan. That's our future development. Remember how it was submitted in October? I do not see meaningful input in tonight's comp plan presentation or Friday's agenda, which I see as a get-around. White Mill Road in Fairburn, I mean, Right, White Mill Mo- White, White Mill Road is in Fairburn and in our city. Are they contributing to improving the road? There is a fire entrance between two houses. Instead of the developer having two entrances, that's unacceptable. Legislative priorities. Property is in Union City who wants to de-annex, not in the City of South Fulton. There should be no land swaps. Citizens do not know about, especially since Union City annexed more than six thousand acres before we became a city. Do not override the mayor's vetoes. Why? Because of the unknowns. We do not know about what inflation is gonna do to the economy, the impending recession, and Putin is getting ready to throw down, oh, no, bombs.
I'm gonna give you a few more moments to finish as a former elected official, but I, I will ask you to just.
Thank you, I'm gonna hurry, I'm gonna really hurry. So, based on all of that, we should be really dealing with how we're spending money. Citizens requested an operational audit, not an internal audit of staff position. That's not gonna be independent. Public Works Operating Center, where is it? How much does it cost? And how's it being funded? Georgia Power, this is the last one, this is key. There are environmental impacts on people from 5G. I am begging you to defer a decision on that until you read the public health consequences. Thank you so much, and I'm gonna still try to love you, okay?
Shonda Clark, Yufi Dow. Good evening. Uh, before I begin, I'd just like to ask, uh, for a bit of, uh, professional courtesy. As I've said here, this is public comment. I saw the mayor call the order when, uh, Council, Councilmember Gomes was trying to make a statement. So, I just think it's, uh, good decorum for professionals, um, in public comment, if you're a public servant, to be engaged. And with that being said, my comment is about the four-year lease outside of the City of South Fulton and the move to allocate a half million dollars for a press department. Uh, the City of South Fulton has a community of citizens interested in living in the city with access to first-class services. The first-class services I speak of can be a Parks and Recreation Department with adequate staffing to provide programming and activities to and for City of South Fulton citizens in all seven districts. Soundtown Recreation Center has a group of young ladies and their parents that have to practice outside in the cold on occasion. Welcome Mall Park Recreation Center has a champion-level team unable to practice in their home facility because the pool is closed. Utilizing City of South Fulton funds for a facility outside of city limits to pay individuals that may not be citizens of City of South Fulton is a poor use in stewardship of City of South Fulton funds. The citizens of City of South Fulton need a group of supporters like Bill Edwards has on city council and in multiple, multiple City of South Fulton departments to prioritize, prioritize their needs. The Edwards Group on council and their enforcers have attended to the needs of special interests and interests of their own, but not the interest of their constituency. District One has Soundtown Recreation Center, and District Three has Welcome Mall Park Recreation Center. These district representatives have struck down nearly everything citizens want as presented by the mayor, and our facilities are still understaffed and partially open at best. And so, for me, I think we have to reprioritize what our, our interests are and put it back on the citizens that, uh, that really operate the city through their tax expenditures. And that's my time. We don't have anybody on Zoom, right? Okay. That completes the, uh, non-Jack in Our Lane, uh, comments for tonight. Yeah, the only comments remaining are for Jack in Our Lane. We have thirteen of those.
Okay, we will hear Jack in Our Lane, we will hear you shortly. Uh, I believe the next item now is council comments. We will start with District One, Dr. Ral.
Uh, thank you, um, very interesting comments. Um, I will say that I think there continues to be misinformation on so many of these items, which is regrettable, um, from whether we own the building, whether there's mold, uh, just all number of things. Um, I wish the first time that I would have heard any concern from the people who are, have represented District One would have contacted me specifically before we got to this point because I would have been more than happy to shed light on any of that information. I continue to make myself available in that way. But, um, I won't take up a lot of time because I think throughout this comment, I hope the city manager will take some time to address some of the misinformation that you heard addressed by the public.
Madam City Manager.
I know, Mayor, that there was a lot said, and I know, um, particularly, I wanted to make sure that I responded to the comments about the police department, um, the one-hundred Hartsfield location, and the mayor did respond to that. The building that they moved out of on Old National was not, uh, owned by the City of South Fulton. We were renting that facility, and due to the deteriorating conditions there and the mold, uh, we felt, um, it was in the best interest of our employees and in the city that we relocate them. I don't know how many of you had an opportunity to listen to our work session two weeks ago, but we were using, um, a commercial real estate broker, T. Dallas Smith, and they have looked at numerous locations around the City of South Fulton. But unfortunately, we have not been able to find a location fitting for our police department. So, uh, this is a temporary fix. We have no expectations of leaving them at that location. We have purchased nine acres off of Old National to build a police department. So, I definitely wanted to address that.
Thank you, uh, Council. I'm gonna ask for order, you all spoke, so we, we, it's our turn to speak, and we'll be on intermission, and at the end, and you all can speak again. Following up for, on, on one public comment question, uh, do we have a mold study of that building that we can share with our constituents?
Yes, we do. Um, is Martha Anderson here? Okay, we will get you the name, and we can share that information as well. But we did have a professional company go out and do an assessment of the mold in the building that the police moved out of on Old National.
Thank you. Uh, Council, Councilwoman Gomes.
Well, first, I want to thank everybody, um, for coming out tonight. Um, I know that this will be a very interesting meeting, but I appreciate your engagement and for being here. Uh, I do want to remind you all that we do have a Community Appreciation Day to support the businesses that are at Button Village. That will be on Saturday, November the fifth, from twelve to four. Uh, we will have bouncy houses, food, music. from 12 to 4:00. We will have bouncy houses, food, music, and an opportunity to engage with business owners in the community. I would love to see you out for that. Also, too, on this Thursday, we will be having our Senior Summit in Health Fair that will be at the South Arts West Cent- what is it? Southwest Arts Center off of New Hope Road, and that is in conjunction with the police department. That will begin at 11:00 a.m. on Thursday, October the 27th. We've heard a lot of comments, and I'm glad that the city manager was able to address some of the falsehoods that have been stated. We do welcome the P-card conversation, because there are things that you all probably need to hear. We've been very transparent, and it's so nice of Mr. Snellings to really address that I, I paid tuition with the P-card, which is absolutely false. So, I, I just want you all to be aware of the truth, and I have nothing to hide, nothing at all, and I do support this city. I am very transparent, and I have no reason to lie about anything or take your money or my money to misuse it. So, again, I thank you, and I welcome the opportunity for us to have this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, District Three, Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mayor. I am excited to see that this room is packed with engaged constituents, and I would ask that you please stay to hear the discussions in its entirety, because it would clear up a lot of the misinformation that has been put out in the community. The Welcome Mall Park pool is closed, and it is closed because this council voted to renovate the roof of the pool, and we have voted, we have invested over $2 million in that pool renovation. That renovation would not be complete until May of 2023. I am just as frustrated as you all about the pool being closed, but unfortunately, due to the supply and demand issues, ordering materials has been very difficult for contractors, and they are working as fast as they, as they can. The city manager can tell you that I have my foot on her neck about this pool, because I want our championship winners to be back in our pool, but it's beyond our control. This council has invested over $2 million for the repairs, and they are working as fast as they can. When you leave out, you see the scaffolds up, because the pool is under construction. As far as the P-card, I really don't want to dignify this, because we will have a lengthy discussion during the P-card discussion, but what I will tell you, as I, I have been sitting in this seat since 2017, I've never been asked to pay any expenditures back. I've never been accused of, of misusing my P-card. I've submitted all my receipts according to our P-card policy. I do, I did go to school for accounting. I do have a master's in accounting, so I'm not gonna do anything that is against the principles that I have been taught or my moral beliefs and convictions, because I do not want my husband, Lieutenant Colonel Willis, to have to put handcuffs on me and take me to Rice Street. I enjoy representing the district that he grew up in, and I will not do anything unethical to jeopardize that. We will continue with our annual food distribution for Thanksgiving's this year. Mr. Ramsey, can you please pass out the flyer to everyone in here? Just scan the QR, QR code to register. We have a maximum of 1,000 people we can give Thanksgiving's bags to. So, we already have 300 people registered. I will be sending the flyers to all of the schools in the city of South Fulton, so please register to get your Thanksgiving's bag. And then, this Saturday, there will be a citywide trunk-a-treat here at Welcome Mall Park. So, please, if you want to participate as a community, please make sure you reach out to the Park and Recreation Division, so that you can come out, bring your car or your table to represent your community. I'm looking forward to seeing you, and again, thank you for coming and engaging with the city of South Fulton, and please stay through the entirety of the meeting, so you can hear the discussions and get the correct information. God bless you all.
District Four, Councilman Sebastian.
Good evening, everyone. Again, thank you all for being here and for being engaged. My comments, basically, Councilwoman Rau started with them. There's a whole lot of misinformation that goes around. I try not to govern by next door, although I do every now and then try to address things on next door, and I've been quickly learning that that's a futile effort. But nonetheless, one thing that I've always said is, I don't know any of these council members whose offices, whose phones, whose emails are closed off to the public. We all have newsletters, by the way. If you don't, if you're in District Four and you don't get my newsletter, please email and get signed up for it. I don't block people off of my emails. Just email. I don't block people from my newsletter. Just email, and you'll be put on it. Misinformation. I don't spend $5,000 a month. My P-card limit is $5,000 a month. So, if we have to go to conferences, or we have to do events in the community, we have up to $5,000 that we can use. It is not that we spend $5,000 a month, people. We are not that wasteful, okay? The other thing is, I, I think it's a lot of information on this whole thing with the police that could have made, could have been made a little bit clear. And quite frankly, we are failing you by not communicating properly, right? But be reminded of this. This council does not run the communication department for the city. We try to communicate to you guys through our newsletters as much as possible, and in one-on-one conversations that we may have with citizens or HOA groups and so forth. But it's not this council's job. When we ask for things to go out in the media or after meetings, it is not our job to go and say, "Put this, put that out, put that out, put that out." That's why you allow us to pay people for doing that sort of stuff. And I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, because let me tell you this. Before I was a council member in year one of this city, we had an issue with water that was contaminated. Former Councilwoman Gilliard can attest to this, and I called her, and I said, "I just got back in town. I just learned that our water is contaminated, and no one in my household knows. How are we communicating out to citizens?" We weren't even supposed to wash our hands with the water. And what she told me then was to call the mayor, which I did. And I said, "Mr. Mayor, water contamination. How are we communicating out to the citizens here unmasked?" So, we have had a problem from day one with communication, for whatever reasons. I think we're a city that's big enough that we should be able to have a better communication system, even our own television channel. We should be able to have public information channel. So, those are some of the things that we probably should look into and try to push forward. So, I'm just gonna say this. I don't think, again, anyone up here of these six people, by the way, let me just say this. I have no friends on council. None of them are my friends, okay? You know what they are? They're my colleagues on council, and I try to work with them accordingly. When we have disagreements, I'm not gonna come up here and fight with them over disagreement. Guess what? We have already done that. So, when I show up to meeting, unless something has happened for me to change my mind, I'm ready to vote. My mentor, who is a ma- who is a mayor in a city in Minnesota, right, he said to me, "Councilmember Sebastian, your council meeting should take about 90 minutes. Between you and staff and work sessions, when you show up to council meeting, everything should be worked out, and you should come to vote." I pray that we can get there one of these days. But for the type of misinformation that I see out here, and I said to one of my constituents yesterday, good people don't want to get into government, because you know what? Good people who are in government get treated really, really crappy. And so, all of us need to look into the mirror and said, "You know what? Let me call my council member. Let me really get the truth here." I see it out there. I see it. And I'm disappointed that some people that I know know better are putting out misinformation, and it's, it's galling, because you're saying, "Boy, you can't even talk, because if you talk, they're gonna jump in you, and they're gonna accuse you of sleeping with somebody that you're not sleeping with," right? I'm just telling you, that's how we get treated. They, I've seen it out there, people saying, "We taking money out of the table." And I'm asking my colleagues, "How come y'all getting the cut, y'all not giving me none?" Listen, I'm being real with y'all. So, I'm saying, Councilmember, former councilmember, I'll talk about love. Listen, I don't have people that I hate. I just don't do that. It's not in my nature, right? So, I love on everybody as much as they allow me to love on them. But what I do, I really do try to talk the truth and do what is in the best interest. So, with that, thank you all for really, really coming out, and my fear with the whole P-card issue, I don't care what comes out, right? My fear is that there's some individuals who are involved in this whole process, that we can by further damage their names under repetition. So, just gonna say that. That's my concerns. With that being said, thank you all.
Thank you. District Five, Councilman Reeves.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. Well, I would like to say I, I have friends on council, but I keep hearing y'all say, "I have no friends on council." I don't know how that makes me feel, but you know, but, right. But however, I do want to thank to the constituents. I do want to thank y'all for coming out, voice y'all concerns, particularly to the residents of District Five. And one thing is, I make myself available. I hear I'm not, you know, around or don't respond, but I do. And so, you can call me, and I will pull up on you in your driveway. That is my office, because I don't feel like you have to travel down here to City Hall or to wherever, but we're local. That's a beautiful part about local government. Residents will call me. I will meet with them privately in a little cluster to hear their concerns, and so, and I address those concerns. And so, and one of the things that I try to do is I try to stay positive all, all the time. Everybody tells, "How you doing today?" "Best day of my life." Before anything happens, you have to wake up first, and so you have another day to get it right. So, this, we are work in progress. Everything is in progress. And let me just say this about the police precinct, and I'm just gonna disagree with some of the statements about our chief because, and our staff. I actually let staff do their job. We have been looking for a precinct before I got on council, and while I was on here, there was opportunities and opportunities and opportunities. They just did not manifest. They did not materialize. So, this was the best option. The precinct that moved out from Old National, we did not own, but we do own the former building that's the Jackson Music Store, so that will be relocated down the street in front of the future of what's coming. So, I would like us to champion on the process on this precinct materializing, because this is land that we own. And so, but without going into further detail about that, is just stay tuned, stay more engaged, you know, stay keeping us accountable, and I thank y'all and appreciate y'all for that. And no matter what, I love you, and you can't do nothing about it. Thank you. Oh, wait, wait, hold on. I'm sorry. I will be remiss. This week, we do have booze and booze at Old National Commons of Taste of Soho. Come on out. We do have a fall festival that's World Changers this Saturday come out, and November the 5th, we are having a Veterans Chili Cook-Off. If you're a veteran and you can cook chili, we have three categories: meat, vegetarian, and vegan. And so, come on out. There's a top prize for each category, and that will be at our Field at Burdette. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Reeves. District Six, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank all of the residents who came out. It is certainly gratifying to see a room full of enthusiastically engaged residents, and with that being said, I have no further comment.
All right. I, we're doing our council comments now. I do want to thank everyone for coming out. There had been talk that attendance at our meetings was on the decline. I am happy to see that that is not the case. There are a ton of events for fall, for Halloween, and for November and Thanksgiving that are coming up. You can find most of those events at cityofsouthfulton.gov. You can find others at khalidcares.com, and if you have not signed up for my newsletter or mobile alerts, you can text the word FOLTON, F-U-L-T-O-N, to A lot has been said. More will be said in the coming hours. It's often said that politics is all about relationships. I think that's a horrible saying and a horrible way to do politics. I think politics should be about facts. It should be about data-driven policymaking. The danger in making politics about relationships is that you put yourself in an echo chamber with people that you agree with, people that you have relationships with. They're people that you feel comfortable with, and when new people come with new information, they are often seen as suspect or not trusted, because they don't have the relationship. And certainly, if there are people that you are in conflict with or just don't like, when politics is about relationship, you just don't listen to them, which creates a chilling effect, particularly amongst our staff. When politics are about, all about relationships, and you are a staff member that has to build a relationship with an elected official, it creates a chilling effect on your speech. You are less likely to challenge that elected official or present them with information that they don't want to hear, because you are concerned about building the relationship, and you're not able to just freely operate and challenge and push back and, 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 and say the, the tough things that need to be said. Many of the items that I have vetoed were not even recommended by staff. Staff actually recommended against them or recommended doing them in a different way, and we've got to listen to our staff. We also have to try to listen more to one another when we are having tough conversations and to put policies and the city's best interests over our feelings and our relationships. And with that, Mr. Clerk, I'll ask you to sound the next item.
Mr. Mayor, we're on page two, number seven, veto override discussions, the first item.
Actually, we're not. The first item is the emergency urban agriculture. Thank you for this, Dr. Rau.
Yeah, reading the title into the record, it's a resolution to authorize the city to apply for the city urban agriculture planning grant through the Atlanta Regional Commission and Foodwell Alliance. It's sponsored by Councilwoman Catherine Rau.
My motion is to approve the resolution that would allow us to apply for this funding. The application deadline is approaching on November 18th, and we want to make sure that the staff and the work group have sufficient time to pull together quality application. It costs for a match of cash or in kind up to $75,000.
So, move. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? I, I just have one, one quick item. I was recently at Chattahoochee Hills Charter School, and the USDA is also coming out with, I think, $32 million in urban agriculture funds, so I just want that to be on our- to be on our radar as well, uh, that we can maybe combine all of these funds together, uh, to do more urban ag in our city.
They're loans. They were loans. Cause I was there with you, but they were loans.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Sebastian says they were, they were loans. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's roll call, Councilmember Rau.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Prochey Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
That resolution is approved unanimously.
All right, go ahead and sound the next item.
Now we're on item seven, uh, first veto override is council consideration of an override of the mayor's veto of ordinance creating Department of Public Affairs and Special Events, that ordinance was sponsored by Councilmember Williams.
I'm, I'm going to ask, uh, i-if it is all right with Councilwoman Williams, since items number seven and eight deal with the same department, could we take those items together?
Sure.
All right, uh, I will entertain a motion.
I move to override the mayor's veto.
It's been properly moved and seconded, uh, do we have any discussion? Dr. Rau.
Um, just for the benefit of the public, how much did we, the city spend on our Juneteenth celebration coordinating special events? Can somebody speak to that?
If I'm not mistaken, it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was budgeted.
Right. When you add that, what city anniversary, do you have an estimate of how much should that cost the city?
Hmm, just off the top of my head.
I'll take a rough ballpark.
Thirty thousand.
Okay. So just on those two events alone, paying outside contractors is the equivalent of what we would pay, would you say, for this position in terms of what we are contracting out?
Yes, but we gotta include salary.
There's just two events for the year, not to mention all the events that occur in the city. Okay, so I, I just wanted to get at the edification of the public, a, a basic napkin cost benefit analysis would tell you that it would be cheaper to bring this in-house than to keep contracting out for every event, so I, I just wanted to share that, so.
I've had, um, in-depth conversations with Ms. Sally Jones, um, regarding this position, and I think the public affairs role is very important because, um, I would like to see them take a more active role in community and citywide events. For example, um, as a policymaker, um, I really like, would like to focus more so on, um, policy versus a lot of the community outreach events that I have, um, initiated over the years, such as Feeding the City, um, such as the, uh, different festivals that happen at Welcome Mall Park. I truly do believe that we need someone in the Public Affairs Division to oversee all of those, um, citywide events, the, uh, the citywide anniversary as well as, um, the State of the City. And obviously, uh, there is a opportunity for us to grow and approve in this area, Ms. Sally Jones, because we have a room packed with residents, residents that could not even get into this meeting. And a lot of the comments from residents that, um, were made today was information that was misinformed. I mean, I only represent District three, and I think I do a pretty good job sending out quarterly mailers, emails to give my residents factual information. But to hear the information that I heard today is not a lot of factual information that we have to clear up today. And so I just think that what we're doing now isn't working. And I would like to defer to the city attorney as it relates to policy. Is it, or is it our job as city council to create and approve and fund positions? Because that's what I read in the charter, and I'm being accused of doing, doing the city manager's job when in fact the charter says that this city council shall create and fund positions. Correct.
No, it's always been.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask that, that we, we don't have any shot, and we're gonna have a civil, a meeting, uh, you all will get a chance to speak at the end of the meeting with any council person that wants to stay behind, but right now, it is the council's turn to speak. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So as a founding mother of this city who worked along with several residents to bring the city to fruition, there have been two charters. Uh, the original initial charter was House Bill five fourteen, that language was in House Bill five fourteen, and now we are operating on the charter, uh, House Bill ten, um, ninety-three. And nothing was changed with that language. And it states that this city council creates, dissolves, and fund positions. Not in specifically those words, but it does say that in the charter. Am I correct or am I not?
You correct, the current charter, and I think has always been constituted, is a city council, uh, former government city manager, and the council sets forth the policy, the other policy that the city manager follows, and that includes creating or abasing departments.
So it is the city manager's job to essentially effectuate the policy that we set. And I'm doing my job when we create, when we see there's a need, when there's a shortfall. And if you look at all of our budgets, it is on Open Gov. I'm contracting videographers, I'm contracting people to write press releases, I'm contracting people to come and cover what's going on in the community, I am contracting people to, uh, tell the story of who we are, who the city is, so that people can hear positive things versus the misinformation and the negative and the propaganda that's being put out. Because the negativity does impact our economic development and our financial viability of the city. And so, Ms. Sally Jones, um, I understand that you may not one hundred percent agree with this policy, but we also have to be consistent. We can't say we should listen to staff recommendations when it suits us. If we're gonna listen to staff recommendation, we should always look into staff, listen to staff recommendation, cuz I do recall the city manager saying that we should not approve the twenty, the possibility of studying the twenty dollars per hour because she didn't want us locked into that. And it was, it was approved, but the city manager recommended against that. So please don't say we should follow what the, what the city manager's recommending and when that's not a consistent policy. And if I'm not mistaken, that came with an over million dollar fisc. Am I correct, Mrs. Sally Jones? At least that's what your, the assistant city manager told me, that that fisc for that twenty dollars an hour study was a million dollar fisc.
If, if that's what he told you, then I will stand behind what he told you, but, um, we do have at least, I think, over a hundred employees that are, uh, below the twenty dollars per hour minimum.
And the reason you recommended that we not do that is because we were doing a comprehensive development, I mean, a comprehensive, a compensation wage study
Yes.
That may have yielded higher than twenty dollars an hour
That's correct.
For wages.
Yes.
But we still did, we still went against her recommendation. And so, in this case, is the public affairs position budgeted in the budget that we just
Karen, did we put, yes, yes ma'am, we did put that in there.
So as a policymaker and doing our job, we created this role and we also budget, we funded this role.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Willis, uh, Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's, I think the lack of communication between the mayor and council sometimes contribute to some of these, whether it's, you know, to some of these vetoes and some of these issues. It is our job to structure and build the government in a way that we see fit for the time that we're here. That's just how it works. When I, um, when I was running for office, a lot of what I was told by the residents of District four, that we don't feel like we're getting anything in District four. We feel left out. That's just what it is. There was no upgraded done to City Grove Park, there was very little done to Wilkinson Mill Park. And so, we didn't have a lot of functions, we don't have any public buildings in District four, we have a couple of, um, fire stations, that's it. We have no way to have meetings, we have to ask for places to go and have meetings. So by way of, by way of, the warehouses are a union city, by the way. I'm hearing that, correct. These two items, eh, they are our attempt at helping out in an area where this city, as I just said before, we do have a prob, a communication problem. We have problems sometimes executing events and getting things done. Gary is the head of the department. I would have an event and sometimes Gary showing up to take pictures himself. I mean, it's, we need to structure things differently so that that area of the government works better. And it is our opinion that this is, these two items are steps in that direction. Now, if it doesn't work, guess what we have the power to do? Come back and change it. But we can't sit and do nothing based on the first ten months of me being here, and I'm one of those that try to keep away from staff. I just ask for things and sometimes if they don't happen, they don't happen, right? But the bottom line is, we have to do something and make some changes. I know we, we have created other things since I've been here, and I'm not sure why, is it communication and discussion cannot happen between mayor and council to say, okay, here's what it's gonna be, here's what it's gonna cost. Okay, we gonna try this, and if it doesn't work, we come back and we fix it again. So I'll just say, it's part of our jobs and we have to do it because we can't just not do anything based on what, how it's working or not working out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sebastian. Councilwoman Gums.
I think pretty much a lot of my colleagues have shared that the present system that we have is currently not working. I believe we only have two people in our communications department at this time. Two, to filter communication across the entire city. With the robust engagement that we try to have with our residents, it is no way humanly possible, uh, to really have you all engaged the way that we need to with only two people. Our social media doesn't hardly get any traction. A lot of our events, we spend, as, uh, our city manager has shared, a lot of money on our events. And none of the residents show up. Some of y'all do, but it's only a handful. So the present, the present strategy that we have right now is not working. Certainly, we don't wanna create, you know, positions just to be creating them, this is something that we feel, and based off of the information that was shared today in public comments, is definitely something we need. You know, it's unfortunate that we are, have to override the veto, but again, it is something that is needed for this city. I think you will see a streamline, you will also see improvement in the way that we filter out information, uh, and I, I think is, is beneficial for the city. I do have a question, um, and just for clarification, city manager, maybe you can help, this is for two positions?
Yes, it's for the director and then the special projects manager.
And we budgeted how much for it?
Karen, do you have that available?
Three hundred and nine thousand, and that is including salaries and their actual budget for the year, events? Is that correct? Okay, all right, thank you.
That's the operating budget, yes.
The operating budget, okay, thank you.
Madam city manager, if it is okay with you, I will be directing questions to our Director of Communications, Mr. Gary Leffwich, our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Karen Slaton Dixon, and, uh, our Deputy Parks Director, Mr. Stephen Maxwell. Could they come forward, please?
Yes, that'll be fine.
We are here with this ordinance creating a Department of Public Affairs because it was requested, uh, for you to put it in the budget. And you said no, and so the council just created a department. That is why we're here. Uh, it is, I, I just want to be clear, this was not your recommendation for this department. Do I have that correct?
Yes, sir, that was, that's correct.
And, and, uh, Mr. Gary Leffwich, you are our Director of Communications now, was this your recommendation?
No, sir.
How many staff do you have in your department now?
Currently, two.
Two and you, so that, that's three?
Two, including me.
Two, including, how, what, what is the number of staff that you have for, not, not that are hired, but how many staff positions do you have under communications?
We were up to five.
Five, including you?
Mm-hmm.
Five, okay. My, my next question is, is, is for, uh, Ms. Karen Slaton Dixon. This is, this department is three hundred thousand dollars. That is the salaries and benefits? Is it also an events budget?
No, it's actually, yes, that's correct.
What, what, what is the budget for, what percentage, what, what, what amount of that three hundred thousand dollars is for events?
I don't have that correct number with me, um, tonight, but it is for a total, and we pretty much budgeted at probably about seventy-five percent because we figured that the position wouldn't be filled until the first of the year.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna ask Mr. Maxwell to come forward. Uh, between, i-i-it's my understanding that between Parks and, uh, Communications, they handle the Juneteenth and the, uh, city anniversary. I thought that we spent one hundred thousand dollars on the city anniversary. Is that not correct?
The city anniversary didn't fall under Parks in the budget. What was put in the budget for the department was that as Juneteenth.
All right, and that, that, we, we heard that was one fifty. Who, who handled the budget, who handled the production of the city anniversary? Would that be you, Mr. Leffwich?
Could you repeat the question?
Who handled the production of the city anniversary?
The Communication Department did with a budget of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
A hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So we are at two hundred and seventy thousand dollars on events that virtually no one attended. The, I wanna talk about the, 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 I, I, I wanna, I wanna say, uh, something about the, madam city manager, you said that there are one, as many as one hundred employees that are not making twenty dollars an hour in our city?
Yes, that's correct, based upon, um, the information provided to me by our finance, uh, no, not finance, our HR department, pardon me.
The living wage in metro Atlanta is now seventeen ninety-two an hour? If we have a hundred employees that are not making twenty dollars an hour, the last thing we need to do is be setting up a new department to hire and create more employees. We need to get the people that are already in our department, uh, paid a living wage. I produce, uh, a newsletter. It usually takes me about twelve hours to write the newsletter. There are, uh, a lot of links, this last newsletter actually took me about eighteen hours, there were all of these videos. I will say that, that in, there's been talk about, uh- I will say that, that in, there's been talk about misinformation. My newsletter is reviewed by lawyers. There is a link to a document for every, everything that I assert in the newsletter. This newsletter had no less than four videos of council meetings where you can see these items being debated and worked through the process and being not recommended by our staff. I, I also spend a great deal of my account hiring people inside our city. The $270,000 that we spent for Juneteenth and for our city anniversary were spent not only by, not only with consultants that don't live in the city, they don't even live in Fulton County. We want to talk about relationships. They don't have relationships. That's why nobody showed up to the events. There are people like Tori Thomason with Old National Entertainment or, or Carlos Neal with After Nine Partners who pack out parks for half that amount. But we don't hire our own folks. And so, oh, I never, I never thought I would find myself agreeing with Bill Edwards. But I am going to ask now, Ms. Karen Slaton Dixon, we all have council aides and staff that, that, you know, can help us put on events and help us write newsletters. How much are we paying for council aides? What, what is, what is that budget for, for the city council and mayor's office?
Well, those positions started at $57,000.
And, and, and the total with, with fringe benefits, I think it's something like $589,000 we're spending on support staff?
You mean overall for all seven districts?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Right. $600,000 for support staff. A communications director with four staff people, four staff positions. Why are we doing this? And are these new people that want to speak again? All right, these are people that want to speak again. Councilwoman Willis.
So, one of the things that we're gonna talk about when we get to P. Card and procurement policy is policy, because that's our job policy. You know, I would love to give certain people that I am familiar with and I like contracts, but that's not legal. In government, we must, we must follow policy, procurement procedures. Mr. Leffrich. Ms. Sally Jones, do you mind if I ask Mr. Leffrich a question?
No, ma'am, that's fine.
How did you choose the vendor?
We chose the vendor through the procurement process where we interviewed four different vendors and this was the vendor with the best price.
So, as much as I want to use people that are local, familiar, we have to follow policy or we can go to jail. As far as the budget, I recall revising the ordinance so that we could use the same budget, $120,000 budget for both, the city anniversary and Juneteenth. So, wasn't that $120-something budget used for two events? Juneteenth and the city, I revised the budget so that we could use the same budget. And the reason I did that, because if we spent more money, if we needed more money for one event than the other, then we had that flexibility to interchange. It wasn't a separate budget.
Correct. It was $120,000 per event.
Per event?
Per event. Per event.
Ms. Sally Jones, was that?
Ours was at 80 and we were told, there was no way by the vendor we could do that, so we requested more. And you led the policy change to make it 120.
For a citywide event? Okay. Do you recall at the city anniversary of us only having 10 people?
It was not 10 people. It was not the turnout we hoped. Are you talking about the Thursday night event?
So, we have three days of event. Thursday, we had a town hall event. And I was there, I was on the panel, and I recall seeing approximately 100 people in the audience. Mayor, you didn't attend, but you reported that it was only 10 people there. Was it on, am I correct?
At that event, yes.
The second day, we had an event at the Wolf Creek Amphitheater. How many people approximately attended that event?
There were probably 200 people at that event.
Okay. And so, Mr. Leffrich, one of the things that we haven't been able to do, I know when I got elected, we have a lot of seniors and they don't have emails and they're asking us to mail. They're asking us to do robocalls. And so, that is one of the reasons why we have created a public affairs department to handle citywide events so that Mr. Leffrich can focus on doing more internal communication and building our city, social media sites, and ways that we can communicate to residents. That is one of the reasons why I support this ordinance. It's not a, it's not a slap on Mr. Leffrich's face. It's a way to improve upon what we're already doing because obviously what we're doing isn't working. Correct. Thank you.
Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to address the whole issue of attendance at those events, if I may, because I was at both of those events. And there were quite a bit of people. As a matter of fact, I was venturing to say that number 200 might be low, right? So, I, I, I don't want it to be, if it's gonna be said that nobody attended these events, it's really misleading to people in this room and we should stop doing that, right? Now, was the turnout at both of those events as well as, as it could have been? No. But the problem was, many of my residents said afterwards, they did not even know. So, it goes back again to us failing our residents by not having a proper and robust communication thing in place. So, again, we, we're not here to diss anybody. We're not taking a dilute in the body's power. We're saying what we're doing is not working and we're trying to strengthen it. But I don't want us to sit here and say nobody attended all events. Good. That's, that's not true. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sebastian. Councilman Reeves.
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. Has anybody in this room attended an event and then found out about another event that you wanted to be at, going on at the same time in another place, but didn't know about it? Right. So, we're gonna try to minimize that as this person will keep all events and things of that nature. So, we want all of our constituents to attend. And for the fifth anniversary, you know, it was, we turned five, so, you know, I made a big deal out of it within myself and we had a nice little thing going on, but, because that's something unique. That is our DNA. No matter what other holiday there is, May 1st is this city's birthday. And I'm big on birthdays. And so, one thing is, we should all celebrate. And that is the one thing that is unique to this city. And something that we all, because we all can do better in participation and spreading the word for those who do know that we can do that. And so, but this, I think this position is warranted. And so, for all the reasons my colleague stated and for all the reasons of the future to come. And so, that we can be more engaging and, you know, whether it's information or whatever, the bottom line is, is information. And, you know, the power of information is what you do with it and what you can, you know, make the best use of it is. And hey, listen, we're all here, we all want to be on, on one accord with one message. And so, that's the way we, I feel that we can stay on one message is to have accountability within this department. And, you know, and Mr. Leffrich, you were staffed with five people, correct?
Yes, sir.
And three of those positions have been unfilled for how long?
Since August.
Since August.
Because I have been held off and not allowed to go forward and fill them.
So, you've been held off, you, you've been held off?
Until this change is effective.
And that's been since August? And that directive came from?
My supervisory chain.
Which would be?
The city manager and the assistant city manager, who rightfully did so because we did not know what was gonna shake out of this.
So, when did this dialogue occur about this position being created with you? When did you find out about this position being created?
The public affairs director?
Yes.
Shortly before it was placed on an agenda. There was no discussion with me.
So, that would be approximately?
There was a discussion, to set this correct, of putting a press secretary in the clerk's office.
But the time that the positions was unfilled from August until that time, was there any advertisement of the position being open? Did you try to fill those positions immediately?
We did.
So, was that taken off the website?
It was never on the website. We immediately wanted to and we wanted to be able to pay more than we were able to offer to attract a better quality talent to do the job.
And that discussion happened when?
That discussion happened after we, in August, the staff went to two.
And after that meeting subsequently, then all discussions ended?
Until this time.
Okay, well, look, I'm gonna, but I'm gonna let my other colleagues go further too, but I will say this last thing as far as doing business with the city. We have a procurement process. I can't put friends on. But friends who have a legitimate business, I can tell them how to sign up to do business with the city of South Fulton and they can go through the process. So, there is a way that you can do work with the business, with the city of South Fulton. You have to go through the process of being on the procurement list so you can get the solicitations that's coming out and bid on them accordingly. And I hope that there's going to be something that our staff comes up with on how to do business with the city and how to hold those. And, but, communication is key and I think that is important to know and denote, and I'm gonna yield my time.
Thank you, Councilman Reeves. Just a few points of clarification on, on what we just heard. Mr. Leffrich, the, was there an RFP or a solicitation for the city anniversary or Juneteenth?
Yes, there was for Juneteenth, but the short timeframe between when it was approved and when we had the anniversary, there was no time.
There was no solicitation for the city anniversary? All right. And then for Juneteenth, how long was that solicitation out?
That you'll have to talk to Mr. Maxwell. That was actually planned and done by the Parks and Rec Department.
Mr. Maxwell, while, while he's coming, I have a, a couple of questions for you. I wasn't at the city anniversary dinner on the 28th. I was at the African American Mayors Association in Washington, DC. But the Southwest Arts Center seats 375 people. What in your estimation were the number of people that attended that were not staff and not on the program?
Likely, as Councilman Sebastian remembered, about 10 or 15.
Thank you. You can come forward, Mr. Maxwell. I want to ask you about Wolf Creek. What is the capacity of Wolf Creek?
500.
500? And then with the lawn, what, that's 500 seated? What is it with the lawn?
That's 500 seated.
With the, with the, the lawn area, is still five, it's 500?
No, the number would go up. I want to believe that it says somewhere between 750 and 1,000.
1,000?
If you include the grass there, I want to say it goes up to about 750.
1,000. There were definitely, 200 is generous for the number of people that were at our city, at our, at our Juneteenth celebration. The fireworks were spectacular. I was there with the first dog. We met every person in the field because 200 people is generous. But there are 1,000 people that that place fills. What was the solicitation for Juneteenth?
We had to put it on the agenda for council to approve and then it went through the solicitation process. Since there was an ordinance that was created for the funding for that event, we did that first and then it went through the solicitation process, the procurement. I want to say they had it out, because I wasn't part of the actual process, I'm gonna say they had it out for 30 days. It was a short list of vendors that actually put in a bid and they had to go with the one that was within the threshold.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Williams.
I yield to Councilwoman Row.
Council Morrell.
This point, you know, I don't know how much debate we need to have on this. It's clear that we have not used our resources in a way to maximize the public's participation. I don't know how many times we have to go through an iteration of math, but just those two events alone cover what we're proposing. It just doesn't make sense. And in fact, Mayor, you're reconfirming the fact that we don't have sufficient participation from the public. I know I send out a newsletter every week and it's full of events. And, and the people in this room can attest to it who get this newsletter. So, again, it's not working. I think the key thing here is, if we find we need to pivot in five or six months and we're not improving on that, then we need to shift. That's what, that's what leaders do. They, they admit when something is not right and they turn. It's not working. So, I call for the previous question.
The previous question has been called. Please call the vote for the previous question, Mr. Clerk.
Let's vote to call the question. Roll call, Councilmember Row.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
The question has been called. The main motion is on the floor.
All right. Would you just read the motion and we'll call for the vote?
Yes, on the floor, you have a motion by Councilmember Williams, seconded by Councilmember Gums, to approve items seven and eight, which is the override of ordinance 2022-029, which deals with the creation of the Public Affairs and Special Events Department as well as the override of ordinance 2022-030, which amended the department descriptions.
All right, call for the vote.
So, roll call vote, main motion, Councilmember Row.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums. Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
That motion, those motions are approved. Both items are overruled.
Thank you. I would just ask, madam city manager, if we could produce a new org chart that shows where these new departments will sit, and I, I would ask that for all of these departments, the internal auditor as well. Please sound the next item.
We're on item nine. It's council consideration of override of the mayor's veto of ordinance regulating temporary employees. This is sponsored by council members Williams, Willis, Sebastian, and Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
I will entertain a motion.
I move to override the mayor's veto.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? I just want to reconfirm with our city manager that this is also not something that you recommend.
No, Mayor, I mean...
I just, you know, I just want to, there's, you just want to, you know, have it on the record for this vote. Dr. Row?
No.
Oh, no, I, I was, I thought you were in the queue to speak.
No, I'm not.
Okay, all right. Seeing no other comments, I'll call for the vote.
So, roll call vote to override the mayor's veto. Councilmember Row.
No.
Councilmember Gums. Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
That item was approved.
All right, please sound.
Five to one.
Thank you. Please sound the next item.
Next item is item 10, council consideration of override of the mayor's veto of a lease agreement with 100 Hartsfield Center.
All right, I'm going to open the discussion for this. I... Well, we haven't, I haven't entertained a motion yet, so I just, I just want to make some quick comments. I do believe that this is somewhat necessary. I don't like the way that it came about without public comment. I believe that 18,000 square feet is probably more than we need. I believe that eighteen thousand square feet is probably more than we need. I believe that sooner than later, we should move, uh, our records to the Jackson's Music Store location. It's already building. It doesn't need to be built. If there is exigent circumstances around GCIC and, um, the maintenance of records, then we can handle that within the next few months. And regardless of how this vote goes, I will continue to push to use the properties that we own in the city of South Fulton and to get out of this lease as soon as humanly possible. Uh, and with that, I will entertain a motion to override this veto.
Um, Mayor, we're in common useful-
Okay, go ahead, Doc. Councilwoman Willis.
Um, I would like to, uh, Ms. Sally Jones, can you please bring up Chief Meadows?
Yes ma'am, Chief Meadows.
So, we have a-
We are.
Yes.
So, um, I did go and look at this facility on yesterday, because I wanted to know what this facility looked like. It is moved and ready. It does have furniture, um, in it already, so we don't have to, uh, build anything out. We do not have to purchase much, um, furniture. Uh, we will have to pay for the IT infrastructure to be put in and, um, a few secure doors. Um, can you please inform the public what part of this division will be housed in this facility?
So, as I, as I mentioned before, there will be no public-facing services that will be, um, at the Hartsfield-Jackson location. We have people that work in GCIC. These are the people that enter tickets, uh, into the state system. They enter warrants into the state system, move forward with any of those options. At some point, uh, we got word that one of our employees was sick. Uh, it's, it appears he had mold in his lungs, and he actually had to go through rehab as, as a, um, form of therapy. Uh, and so, that day, when I found that out, I closed National Precinct. I moved everybody out of there, and unfortunately, we had to move everyone that was in the Old National Precinct into the Buttonah Road precinct, which is only twelve, twelve hundred square feet. Um, we moved them out of a building that was roughly eight thousand square feet into a building, uh, that was already occupied, um, and it was already full at the time, into twelve hundred square feet. And so that's where they've been operating out of, uh, since that time. Our detectives have been running extension cords into buildings so that they could do their paperwork, uh, inside of their patrol cars. And that's, it, that's just to give you some context of what our people have had to go through over the past, um, well, since July, because we closed down the precinct July twenty-seventh. And so, uh, those are the conditions that we've been in. None of the forward-facing services, no patrol, none of the special enforcement will be going out to Hartsfield-Jackson. Only those units that aren't forward-facing to the public. And in, in other words, the public never see these people anyway. Uh, these are the people that enter warrants into the system, as I said. These are the people that do our interviews, um, uh, for, um, hiring and things of that nature, and so it's primarily administrative services. And, and I heard what you said earlier, Mayor, that you think eighteen thousand square feet is enough. We commissioned a study, um, and they said that with a department our size, we need roughly fifty-five thousand square feet.
Right.
Eighteen thousand square feet of that was just for the administrative services, part of the police department.
Right.
And so, what we're doing, we're taking that part of the police department and moving that, getting them out of that Buttonah Road precinct, because they're all sitting on top of each other. They have, uh, GCIC boxes stacked up, uh, and they're all cramped in twelve hundred square feet of space. Now, I understand, uh, everyone's concern about us moving outside the city, and, uh, everybody here knows what we've gone through over the past two to three years to try to get space inside the city, and I completely agree with you, Mayor. Um, I've had people say, uh, well, why didn't you just move into warehouse space? Well, we tried that. We brought a proposal, and the build-out for warehouse space came to what, roughly five point five million dollars?
And we said no.
And we said no, because that five point five million dollars was going into a building that was only worth two million dollars, and that wasn't a good use of taxpayer dollars. And so essentially what we wound up doing, um, and, and to be perfectly honest with you, there was only one warehouse that was willing to allow us to do that, uh, uh, along Fulton Industrial, and I'll tell you why. Because it's difficult to rent, uh, office space along a warehouse corridor. And so, once we leave that building, they would have had to go in and spend nearly a half million dollars demolishing everything that we built in there in the first place. And they would not allow us to keep the air conditioning units, which would have cost five hundred thousand, to, um, air condition the space for our employees. And so, I, I, listen, I understand, everybody's riding around, everybody sees the buildings. You ride down Old National, and you see all of these vacant buildings, the medical building that was up there. We tried that. It's been, um, uh, in bankruptcy court for a couple of years, and we all looked at that as a possibility. It fell through. We looked at some of the space in the shopping and the strip malls down there. Uh, they wanted seventeen thousand dollars a month for six thousand square feet. Right now, we're getting, uh, eighteen thousand, uh, square feet for twenty-one thousand dollars a month. And they said, well, you're getting prime retail space. I said, we're not selling anything. We need office space. And so essentially, here we are, three years later, uh, we're still without the space that we need. Um, and so, it's important for us to be able, because we're in an emergency circumstance. And actually, I asked that we allow the city manager to sign an emergency lease back in July, because we've been without a space for almost four months now. Um, and, and we can't continue to ask these men and women to operate under those circumstances. And we asked T. Dallas Smith, who's the, who's, we have a contract with for the city, uh, the realtor. If they can't find it, I'm not a professional realtor. If they can't find the space that we need, eighteen thousand square feet, that's a problem. Because it's my job to get these men and women the resources. They need to be successful every day. Now, I've heard people come up and, and question, you know, their, their confidence in me, which is fine. I'm, I've, I've been doing this for thirty-six years. I'm used to it, right? I'm always gonna make decisions that people don't like, and that's fine. Uh, but when you're in a leadership position, and these people look to you to get the resources that they need, I don't have the luxury of worrying about everybody's lack of confidence or confidence in, in my abilities. At the end of the day, they need the space, we need the space, and we appreciate, um, you all's consideration.
Thank you. Um, I still have the floor. Uh, Ms. Sally Jones, do you recommend that we, um, approve this lease for our administrative offices? Not our B officers, but our administrative officers to have a space, uh, to work until it, the, it's a two-year, two-to-three-year process before we, for us to build the location on Old National, correct?
At least.
At least?
Yes.
And, and in the meantime, there are two buildings at the location. There's the music store, and there's the State Farm. And so, the, from my understanding, the precinct for the Old National, for the B officers, will open in the State Farm building, correct?
Yes.
So there will be B officers operating out of the State Farm building. There will be B officers operating out of the Cedar Grove location. There will be B officers operating out of the Cascade location, and, um-
Buttonah Road.
There will be B officers operating out of the Buttonah Road location, and then I am working with Chief Meadows and, uh, um, communicate, I mean, and our economic development director, because to open up a precinct in District Three in the Wayfield Plaza, there will be B officers working out of District Three in the Wayfield Plaza. So all of our interfacing staff will be in our city, not out our city. Right now, the problem that we have is that we have administrative staff working in our B officer locations, which is pushing our B officers, um, in working conditions where they are working out of their cars. It would be irresponsible of us to allow these working conditions to continue when we are enjoying the benefit of the work that they're doing, to continue to make sure that we have a overall decrease in crime over the past three years. In the grand scheme of things, city of South Fulton crime is not bad, but metro Atlanta areas, we hear, you know, constant violent crime incidents on the news. And so, I do want to give our B officers, who are constantly working twenty-four-seven, to make sure that we are safe, um, a habitable working condition. I do not like the fact that we have any of our offices out of the city of South Fulton, but we don't have any accommodations within our city to include, I found a warehouse Friday and sent it to Chief Meadows. And the staff is exploring other operations going into that, but that, that's just a plain warehouse. So to build it out for what the city of South Fulton need will cost millions of dollars, when this oper, this location there moving into, by Hartsfield, is already, it's a ready to, it's ready to, it has offices, it has furniture. It is ready to go. We don't have to build anything out. Just put IT infrastructure, a few cubicles, and a few, um, doors. So, I would think that we will want our police officers to work in habitable working conditions, and the B officers who we interface day-to-day, who will still be in our city, not outside our city, we will make sure that they have the proper working conditions, and then let the administrative staff go where they need to go. We can't punish our whole department for the misdeeds of one police officer, who's no longer working in this city and who can never work in law enforcement again. Thank you.
Councilwoman, I think it's also important to note that this space is actually renting for twenty-five dollars per square foot. Uh, the company that currently has the lease, they're actually eating ten dollars per square foot, and they're only charging us fifteen dollars per square foot. So the market rate for that particular location, it far exceeds, you know, the value, um, um, that, um, that it costs. And, and I just want to put this into further context for you. We, we were in eight thousand square feet, and they said that we need roughly fifty-five thousand square feet, um, to operate every day. Uh, the eight thousand square feet is what the Old National precinct was. We had, uh, twelve hundred square feet at Buttonah Road, and then we had nine hundred square feet at Cedar Grove, and then we had nine hundred square feet at, um, at Cascade. And so when you add all of that up, that doesn't even come to eight, it comes closer to fourteen thousand square feet. We need at least, uh, to have, house our administrative services, eighteen thousand square feet. And so, that's even beyond we, uh, us getting to patrol. And so, um, at the end of the day, I think that it's important for us to realize that for the past four years, we made do. Uh, we made do with the circumstances that we were in. That building was infested with mold. Uh, we, uh, we didn't commission a study. We went to Public Works. Public Works have people that they deal with that do these sort of studies all the time. They brought them in, and they recommended, after, after I shut it down, that that building not be inhabited. And so, when we, uh, reached out to the owners, the owners did not want to do the, um, the repairs to the extent that we were comfortable with to put our employees back in there, and that's the reason that they're in the process of trying to sell the property right now. And so, as we move forward, um, if, if we had not done our due diligence and gone to all of these different places and looked at, uh, these different buildings and so forth, I would say that we were being unreasonable. But I know what we've gone through over the past three years, uh, and I know how we got here.
Thank, uh, uh, I'm sorry, we, we, you, we'll hear from the audience, uh, uh, intermission. Uh, Dr. Row.
A previous question.
Uh, I'm gonna have a point of order about, uh, the decorum ordi, ordinance that you wrote, Dr. Row, and that this council passed unanimously. It says that every member of council will get to engage in debate, and our council rules say that people can speak before we vote. Councilman Sebastian.
I don't think I've had a chance even.
No, you haven't. Go ahead, Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you. Um, are we making, I'm breaking up all six, do what y'all want?
No, I, 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 I- As a person running this meeting, I, 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 I did a, I, 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 I recognize the point of order that I made, that calling for the previous question violates the decorum ordinance that this council passed unanimously, which says that everyone shall have a chance to debate a topic. That, that's, that's what, that's what, that's what the decorum ordinance states, and the decorum ordinance further states that any rules written previously that are contradictory to that shall be overwritten by the passing of that ordinance. Do we need to pull the decorum ordinance up? Or could we just let Councilman Sebastian, who hasn't spoken, speak?
Just let him speak.
No, let's pull the decorum ordinance up. Let's pull it up. Would you go ahead and pull that up, uh, uh, a turn, because this is probably gonna happen throughout the meeting, so.
I'm fine with him speaking. I rescind, yeah, I rescind. I, I defer to my colleague on council. I, I want you to have an opportunity to speak.
She said she rescinded her-
I rescinded, so you can speak.
Thank you, Councilman Morrell. Um-
Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Miss, um, sorry, Madam City Man, Manager, again requesting permission to ask the chief a few questions.
Yes, that's fine.
Alright, so, I sent some questions to staff today and chief, and I got these answers back, because I think you, we heard a lot about the money that we spent, twenty-one thousand dollars, and it sounds like a lot. Is it a lot of money? But I really want us to focus in on what we're netting out for what we're getting, right? And the numbers that I got from you today clearly showed that we're getting an extra ten thousand square feet, because we're giving up the Old National precinct.
Right.
And we're paying only six thousand dollars more.
Additional.
Additional. So it's not new money, right? The new money is just six thousand dollars in additional for more space than we have ever had.
Right.
Let me remind everyone in this room, when we started this city, City Hall was outside the city.
Right.
The very first program we had, which I helped to organize, was, you guys swearing in? Where was it held? In Union City. Our courts have always been enormad court, right? So, there is nobody again on this council who don't want you guys to be here, it within the limits of our city.
Right.
But the reality is, we do not have the space right now to do it. Let me just say this last thing, and I mentioned this to you yesterday, chief, when I went to look at the space. When I went to Old National while, while I was running, and there was still in my sights, I went to file a police report. And I was really embarrassed as to the condition, not only of that precinct inside, but there were cars all over that parking lot. It just seemed like a place that was very, very unsafe. Where's your office, chief?
It's on, my office is on Cascade.
In the police precinct?
It's in the police precinct. Actually, I share an office with the deputy chief and two of my majors.
Okay. So, because I, again, I saw that article, and for a city that have cut crime for the last three years, when other people have saw an explosion in crime in metro Atlanta, I'm a little bit on the embarrassed side that we're treating our police department this way, because again, we are doing our due diligence. It's not that we're not, and we all want you, you guys to be here. So, again, I thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, I, I have follow-up questions. The- I, I do understand, I do understand that the, the, the study recommendations, studies are also always gonna recommend the highest and best. Uh, Madam City Manager, how many square feet is City Hall?
Good question. I don't, I don't know right now, Mayor. I, I-
Alright, I, I believe it's thirty thousand square feet, if anybody can, you know, if there's, if Mr. Valenswiler or anybody in the, in City Hall can, can, can validate that, but-
I think that's the number that I heard.
It's, it's, it's enough, it's, so no one has enough space. No, no one has enough space. Um, I do think though that having B officers operating out of our locations in Buttonah, Cascade, Old National, um, Cedar Grove, and, and hopefully soon Woke Mall, I think that's, I think that that's great. There, there was, um, there was a time when people would go to those places and say that nobody was there. They would look in the window and no one was there. So, being able to activate those spaces is great. Um, I do understand the concerns, uh, about mold. I announced in a town- I announced in a town hall last night that, um, I am moving from Camelot because mold had been found in my building. Mold is, there was black mold in many of the buildings in Camelot, so I do hope that we will show the same concern for the families and children of Camelot that we are showing for our police officers, but that is for another top, that is for another meeting. Um, I... This, this for me was never about the price, right? It was, it was, and not even about it being inside or outside of the city. It was, it wasn't about the price, it was about the process and that we took a vote and we were getting ready to sign a lease without letting our public comment. And I just don't think that that's how we should do business. But I do have another concern. I, I found the Smyrna report quite troubling, that I had asked for repeatedly before I did a press conference to say that I hadn't gotten it. And then, and then when it came out, I'm just going to read one line. There is a detective that said, "The moment that you challenge the person who's been fired and tell her how something is supposed to be done, all hell breaks loose. Your supervisor's phone will immediately start ringing and the chief is on the line cussing out your supervisor." There are statements like that from several officers. My understanding is that they were done under a, a polygraph and the only person who failed the poly, they all passed the polygraph except for the person who got fired. So I don't think that this is just one person according to this report. These things were reported up the chain of command.
May I?
My, my, my concern, my, my question and my concern is for you, Madam City Manager. Will you, as the supervisor of this chief, have an office in this building at 100 Hartsfield that you can come to unannounced and supervise this chief and this police department because they report to you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I doubt that you'll find anyone supervisor in the City of South Fulton Police Department that say that I ever cursed them. You're not gonna find one.
I hear, I hear you. I just, I'm just reading from a report. And with that, I will call for the vote. Uh, Dr. Rau, you have something?
Um, yeah, just a point of privilege. Well, a question for chief because I heard somebody say no action was done as if they didn't know that the person had been released back months ago, even though the story came out three and four months later. Can you speak to the action that, that you took to deal with this situation?
So initially when we found out, uh, after we did receive the Smyrna report, um, I immediately put the employee on, on administrative leave pending termination because my recommendation to, uh, to the city manager and to HR was that the employee be terminated. After we had the opportunity to review it with the Office of Professional Standards, Lieutenant Jubal Rogers, who's here today, um, we decided to reach out to the Georgia Bureau of Investigation. Now, it's being reported that the GBI just came in and started investigating. I reached out to Director Mike Register and asked him to have his people come in and do a forensic audit of our, our transactions within the police department. And he, he happily agreed. Uh, he sent his investigators out there and they've been coming by and they've been questioning our people and they've been going through all of our transactions. And I'm comfortable with the direction of the investigation and I have no doubt that at the end of it, if there's a proper charging decision, it has to be made with any employee, uh, we'll get with the district attorney's office and make sure those charges are appropriate.
Thank you for that because I don't want anybody in this room to think that we wouldn't act and know something that inappropriate was going on in the city. I think this council has consistently showed that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Willis.
Yes, uh, mayor. I did pull up the decorum ordinance and I did send it to the city attorney. Um, I just wanna make a point that it said nothing about no one not being able to call point of, um, previous question until everyone speaks. So I just wanna put that on the record so it comes up, if it comes up again, we're, we can govern ourselves accordingly. Plus I've also looked up, uh, calling a previous question in Robert Rules of Order. And what it does say is that only the person, when it's time to speak, only that person can call and it stops debate. And the previous, uh, question is in effect, if majority, over majority of this council rules for it. So I just wanna make sure that we are clear on Robert Rules of Order. Um, I also want to clear up that it was put out that this council, um, did not want the Smyrna report to get out. The public got the Smyrna report before we did. We didn't even know the Smyrna report was complete. And what was interesting is that the public got the unredacted report. There were officer names that were put out in this report that should not have been put out because they're in special operations. And, um, their name should not have been released in that manner. It should have been redacted. So whoever leaked this report leaked it improperly and then the city manager or the police chief and the city attorney did, wasn't given the opportunity to report to this council that the report was complete or the findings of this report. Am I correct, Ms. Sally Jones, Chief Meadows, and Attorney Hyman?
During the reported investigation, um, I was made privy to certain information. That's why council got the redacted report because of the sensitive nature of certain aspects of investigation and also the potential for pending or future activity. So, um, I can't speak to how the other information got leaked, but I generally try to provide what I can legally, uh, and try to protect council city from not having information that otherwise wouldn't be privy to at the time.
As a matter of fact, I still have not officially been sent a unredacted report. I've, or I only have the redacted report, which came from our city attorney. Ms. Sally Jones, did, did or did not this report get leaked to the public before you had an opportunity to speak to this council about it?
Yes, and from my understanding, um, individuals may request to the City of Smyrna, which from my understanding follow the sunshine laws that allows them to release a investigation findings 10 days after completion of the investigation.
Did this council in any way tell you not to release this information to the republic? I mean, to the public?
No, nobody has told me not.
As a matter of fact, the city attorney advised this council, once the investigation was complete, 10 days after the investigation was complete, that it would go to the public. And so, but the information got to the public before the, the 10 days and we had no knowledge. Let me also explain that this person was a lieutenant. It wasn't a department head, it wasn't a, so department heads report to the city manager. And then typically when things happen with a department head, the city manager informs the city council of things that happen with department heads. This person reported up to Chief Meadows. So whatever personnel actions that happened was between Chief Meadows and the city manager. But when things were leaking out, we as city council have every right to go and ask the police chief about it, but we have to per the charter, let the city manager know that we had that conversation. So, um, I would say that it was thoroughly explained, two investigations were done, one on the officer, the officer was disciplined, the officer no longer works for the city, the officer can no longer work in law enforcement. If you go to Georgia Post certification, you see that that officer's post is suspended. And then there was another investigation done on allegations of, uh, mistreatment of employees and that was unfounded. So we just want the misinformation to stop, the unbiased, the biased information that's being put out as an attack of our police department to stop. Thank you.
Just, if I might add one more thing, councilwoman, and just for the public, the only reason there's a redacted version of it, and I think you said special operations, these are people that work in an undercover capacity. And so it compromises their ability to go out and, and operate in that same capacity when their names and things of that nature is released.
Councilman McGumps.
I'd like to make a motion to overturn the mayor's veto for, what is this, consideration for the lease agreement for the 100 Hartsfield, um, center.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a roll call vote. Councilmember Rau.
Yes.
Councilmember McGumps.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
That item is approved unanimously.
All right, please sound the next item.
Next item is item 11, Contracts and Expenditures. Council discussion on P-card investigations, forensic audit, and internal auditors. Mayor. Thank you. I placed this item on the agenda because I had a meeting with the city manager who told me that, uh, it was the decision of council to withhold my P-card. Uh, that was, that was the conversation that you and I had.
Mayor, I'd say that the decision to hold your P-card was supported by a consensus of the council. I never said the council voted.
Okay, so a consensus of the council. Uh, and that that was why my P-card was withheld. There were, there were questions about receipts and there were questions about a tuxedo purchase. The, I am gonna speak to those now on the record. By the time my P-card was referred to the district attorney's office, I had five months of receipts that I had not turned in. I had them on my desk, they had not gone through, uh, Edmonds and all of the financial software that they, uh, that needed to have been gone through. Part of the reason for that was that in those five months, I had four temps. The reason for that was because no plans had been made for me to be mayor of this city. Wasn't allowed to enter the office until midnight on January 1st. And then we were scrambling to find people. Our HR director told me that it would take six weeks to interview and hire a permanent person, so I began using temps. Uh, they did not, some of them did not stay, some of them did not work out. We had some receipts entered and some were not entered. However, by the end of the fiscal year, September 30th, all of the receipts had been entered, uh, all of the receipts over $25 had been entered, as has been our policy for years. And the, the $600 for two tuxedos, uh, that were for a TikTok video where I hired two young people, uh, to dance with me in this, in this TikTok video, that money was repaid, even though it, it was over a protest. I did not want to repay the money. I thought that the, the young people should be paid for the work that they did. I, I also think that it was a wise investment. Some people may disagree. I spent about $1,000 on a video that over 5,000 people saw versus the city that spent $120,000 on an event that maybe 200 people showed up to. But I paid back the money because I was told my P-card would not be released until I paid back the money, even though I did not actually purchase the tuxedos. I called someone in our finance department because I was actually over my daily limit for the card for that day. So someone else, someone under the direction of finance, who is under the direction of the city manager, made those purchases, they made whatever correction, corrective actions they, they deemed for that person, and I still paid the money back. I still do not have a P-card. We've also had conversation, uh, with the district attorney's office, who has noted that the investigation of P-cards has expanded to the entire city, across multiple departments. So my only request is if we're going to take my P-card, we need to take all of them. Because until, until, until the, until the district attorney has, has concluded their investigation of all of the city's P-cards, we can either have them on or we can turn them all off. But, uh, I, I, I do feel like that this is, I, I do feel like this is targeted, which was my concern about having an internal auditor that reports to city council. Where do they do that? Um, I, it was my intention to veto that, that item, but it was never presented to me to veto, so it passed into law. But these are my concerns. We have, we have directed only two people in the city, uh, to have their P-cards investigated, uh, even though the district attorney has, has decided to investigate all of them. Uh, we, in the, in the, in the opening, in the opening weeks of my administration at the behest of citizens, I called for a forensic audit of all of the city's finances. That was nowhere in my platform. My platform was build better, invest more, and, you know, do stuff for young people. But people asked for that. In that time, in addition to this $270,000 that we spent on events, we found out that over half a million dollars was missing from the pedestrian safety fund and that at this point, only one set of speed bumps has been installed from a million dollar, a fund that's supposed to be a million dollar fund that was set up as a reserve fund, but, uh, the processes and procedures for that were not followed. So my concern again is that these are politically motivated investigations and that if we're going to investigate one, we should investigate all. And if we're going to cut off one card, we should cut off all the cards. If that I yield, Councilwoman Williams.
Please let me.
I move to waive executive session confidentiality and attorney-client privilege for the purposes of having this conversation and to read into the record the memo the attorney sent the city council.
Second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a roll call vote. Councilmember Rau.
Yes.
Councilmember McGumps. Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
That motion was approved unanimously. Councilwoman Williams.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm pulling, I'm pulling up the memo unless somebody else would like to read it.
Mayor, can you please call order in here because the quorum, I just sent you the policy.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Williams.
Are you going to call order?
I, I am going to ask that the, I know that this is, this is heated. I am going to ask people to just refrain from their comments. You will have time to express your, uh, support or dissatisfaction at a later date.
Thank you. On October 20th, the mayor and city council received a memo from our attorney, city attorney, Vincent Hyman, um, regarding the subject email communications regarding mayor's P-card. The memo reads as follows. I'm not going to talk over everybody. It has come to my attention and I've been requested to provide legal clarification regarding an email that is circulating in which I was not copied on, that asserts the mayor intends to veto the council's directive to withhold the mayor's new P-card. This statement or assertion regarding council's directive to withhold the mayor's new P-card would be procedurally and factually inaccurate. If you recall, on May 14th, 2022, council had agreed to allow the mayor additional time to provide all the necessary receipts that he had yet to be provided to the finance department to support and/or justify previous transactions that have been made on the mayor's P-card. Mayor, you had agreed to provide the missing receipts and/or documentation on or before a specified date. The specified date and time had passed and city council on June 14th, 2022, entered into executive session, then reconvened and publicly voted and announced that they would be referring the mayor's P-card transactions to the district attorney's office for further... the mayor's P card transactions to the district attorney's office for further investigation. On October 11th, 2022, an appropriate motion was made and carried to enter into executive session for the purposes of real estate, personnel, and litigation. However, you were not present for this executive session meeting. Notwithstanding, council requested an update on the pending investigations slash litigation surrounding the alleged inappropriate P card usage that had been referred to the DA's office, which would include your P card. This inquiry and discussion is well within the parameters of the Open Meetings Act. Moreover, according to section 3.10A, 1 and 2 of the charter, the city manager is considered the full-time chief executive officer and is responsible for carrying out the policy decisions made by city council. The city has an existing policy regarding P card usage and the submission of receipts and/or other supporting documentations. Since this matter involves alleged P card misuse and is still under active and/or pending investigation from the city's internal auditors, as well as the district attorney's office, the city manager's decision to hold the reissuance of your new P card until the investigations are complete is within the city manager's purview and authority. Therefore, no affirmative action was needed or taken for which a public vote will be required at this time in accordance with the Open Meetings Act.
Do you yield? Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam City Manager, I have just a couple of questions for you. The, how did this council, did the council direct you to take away the mayor's, and I'm not talking about withholding the, the new one, talking about the original thing. Did this council direct you to stop the mayor's P card, turn it off, or did you inform us that you had taken that action?
Yes, I made the decision, and I'm pretty sure, I probably shared with you guys that I had taken that action.
Okay. And that was because?
There were several outstanding receipts that we were still waiting for, for the mayor to submit.
And does staff in finance regularly talk to all council members about their need to turn in receipts or any purchases, like for instance, my gas for the renter car, which is unusual, but I got a call about it. I had to explain it, right?
Yes.
But does staff regularly do that, right, to keep us in line?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And can you confirm that the second time around, because we just heard it, second time around in which the new P card was ordered, that I was the one that answered the clarifying questions, was the P card ordered with the intent of giving it to the mayor, and your response was, they were all turned off, and I came back and I said, mine wasn't. And what you confirmed was that because of the length of time the mayor had his P card from his first as a council member, his card had actually expired. So you had to order a new card for him anyway, for whenever the time comes.
Right.
That he was, would receive it, correct?
Yes.
And that you made the decision that that card was ordered but held until whenever this investigation was going to be finished, right?
Yes.
So the only thing that we said, we agree with you.
That's correct.
For change.
Yes, that's correct. Keep that on the record, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, but, so all the thing about, going about, about council taking the decision to, you know, you know, somehow, some political motive of this council getting back to the mayor with a P card and all that sort of stuff, right? It's not quite the true picture. Because I never asked for the mayor's P card, first of all, I just got here, right? So I never asked for anybody's P card to be held. And by the way, I'm glad to give mine up, okay? As long as I can get my stuff done with my staff, I don't care. I'll give mine up if that's what it means. So the bottom line is, we need to communicate our, and my last question, we, did you or did you not have to relieve a member of staff or fire a member of staff because they also violated the policy by using their P card on the mayor's behalf when they should not have?
Yes.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Willis.
One of the reasons we kept pulling the P card discussion off of the agenda, because we did not want this to appear to be politically motivated, and we had asked Ms. Sally Jones to reach out to the DA office to see when this investigation was going to be wrapped up. I personally requested to see the receipts of the mayor when I was told there was over 100 receipts that were missing and submitted, because all of us wanted to expeditiously wrap this process out. We didn't stand on the steps of any apartment complex and talk about this investigation because we wanted to make sure that this was, this played out. But we're here now. And so as you heard from my colleague, Ms. Sally Jones, did you know that employee that was separated from the city reported up to who?
That person reported up to the finance director.
Ms. Sally Jones, do you mind if I ask the finance director to, to, because I have a couple of questions for the finance director?
Yeah, Ms. Karen Slaton Dixon.
Yes.
Thank you for all that you do, Ms. Slaton Dixon. When I have questions or I'm a little, do I always email you or call you when I feel I should, if I have questions on what I should or should not spend money on as it relates to my budget?
Yes, you do.
The P card is not a slush fund. The P card is a tool for us to expend our budget. Is, am I correct or not?
That's correct.
We have policies and procedures in place to protect all of us. One of the policies that we have in place, am I correct, is the policy that we all have to sign, which is an agreement to say that we are going to, we have to submit receipts and abide by the P card and procurement policies of the finance department. Am I correct?
That is correct.
If we violate that policy, then the finance department reserves right to revoke our P card privileges. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. There is an investigation going on in the DA's office, not only on the mayor's P card, because of expenditures that were used in personal nature, but because there was also a procurement violation. Am I correct?
That is correct. And, and that was because the receipts had not been turned in, and there was an inappropriate charge on the card.
Okay. There was also an inappropriate payout in a, in a form of a requisition that involved a police employee. Am I, or am I not correct?
That is correct.
And the violation, do you mind if I bring Chief Meadows up?
You can bring him up.
The contract, may I please have order, Mayor?
You got it.
Okay. According to your policies, SOPs, that we approved, I asked, was it appropriate for that employee to enter into a contract with the city on behalf of the mayor? And I asked what policies were violated, and you gave me about eight policies. Do you know how much was expended to that, approximately how much was expended by way of requisition to, to that employee?
It was a little over $7,000.
And can you explain what policies, to your knowledge, I have them, it was section 1.17, section 1.13, section 1.7, business transactions with a city of South Fulton was violated, section 1.13, recommendation of commercial products, section 1.15, holding an investment in conflict with the city, 1.18, misuse of position of South Fulton Police Department as an employee, 1.16, familiarity with state law, city ordinances, and South Fulton Police Department rule, and loyalty. And also, we have in our, our ordinance, ordinance 2.1837, that says, "All city employees, officials, or agents shall comply with, shall comply with the city charter when participating with solicitation for procurement contract." It also, we also have a policy, conflict of interest, that says, "No employee must enter into a contract with the city or do business with the city while they are acting as elected officials or city employees."
Right.
Now, Chief Meadows, what violation did this city employee commit by entering into a contract with the city on behalf of the mayor?
Basically, all of the subsections that you just mentioned, and it's also against the city charter for any employee to do business with the city of South Fulton in an off-duty capacity. And so, even above and beyond that, everything that they do has to be, off-duty employment has to be approved by the City of South Fulton Police Department, and in this case, it was not. And so, we found out about the, the contract, and I really can't go into depth about it.
I understand.
Because we have a, we have an open investigation with regards to that, and so, but at the end of the day, those are the general facts.
Ms. Slaton, my question to you is, the employee that was separated for the city because that employee was directed to use their P card to purchase tuxedos for a TikTok video, that employee reported up to you, correct?
That is correct.
And did you have any knowledge that your employee was acting in that capacity?
No, I didn't find out until after the purchase was made and the purchase analyst brought it to my attention.
And so there was direction given to an employee to go out to the store to purchase tuxedos that reported up to you?
That's correct.
And you report to who?
The city manager.
Ms. Sally Jones, did you know anything about this?
I did not.
Did you know anything about the police employee entering into a contract with the city on behalf of the mayor to provide video services?
I did not.
So in the DA's office, Ms. Sally Jones, not only is the DA investigating the P cards of not only the mayor, but a former council member who used their P card to pay their fraternity dues, kappa, alpha, chi, fraternity dues, and this is all public information. Am I correct? And the district attorney is also investigating the procurement violation of the employee that was paid $7,700. I mean, $7,700 for the contract.
DA?
Yes, that, the procurement violation.
That, that one is going to be, undergoing the forensic audit. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Did this council in any way know, have any knowledge of this happening? It was brought to this council in the executive session, right?
That's correct.
I yield.
Thank you. I have a few follow-up questions. Oh, you, you can't get into queue. Go ahead, Councilwoman Reese.
Okay, I, I just wanted to know for the edification of the public and, and a collaborative effort, because I always say collaboration wins championships, and individuals win trophies, and we need a championship. At the retreat, we'd had a retreat, we had a conversation, and afforded the opportunity, we shouldn't even be here. This should not even be a topic of discussion. And so, did we have a discussion on some corrective action to allow for time to get everything in order?
Absolutely.
So that's the team building. So from the time that we had that, how much time elapsed before finance, them took action on the nun reporting?
Was it June, maybe? April, May, June, three months?
Was that a fair amount of time, a reasonable amount of time to make some, the corrective actions?
Most of the corrective actions actually were made.
They were made, mm-hmm.
They were made by that time. Then some of the receipts were kicked back and said that, that they were not legible, or they were not sufficient. So we then went out and hunted down more receipts.
So we're here now. This is all leads to here now. And some things that I don't think should be aired because it just spells corruption. It builds the distrust. And there, from constituents to us on the DA's, and we all know that everybody thinks politicians take the bag, and so, you know, and unfortunately, we are here. But whatever this, this yields out, it will yield. But once it yields it, I ask that we, again, collaborate and come to some corrective action and deal with this in-house and get our affairs in order. Because if the people see that we can't do it, how can they trust us with spending their money on anything if we can't do it? So that's what we need to do. And that's all I have to say. Yield.
Thank you, Councilman Reese. I, I, I would, I would ask for Ms. Slaton Dixon to approach the podium again. I, I have questions for her.
Mayor, look, before we do that, is it possible to have the intermission?
Could we, could we get through this item and then we have intermission? We're in the middle of a discussion.
What? I, I know, but we, okay.
Thank you. And as soon as that, we'll, 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 we'll head towards intermission. Ms., Ms. Slaton Dixon, I, I want to go over some things. Do you have a record of my office paying a city employee, an employee, $7,000?
It was actually a vendor. WHL, I believe, is the name of the, the vendor, and I didn't know about it until that was brought to my attention as well, around about June.
All right, thank you. I'm going to ask Mr. Gary Lefwitch to come forward. He is our communications director. WLH is the broadcast entity of a church. Is Mr. Lefwitch here?
I believe he left, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Has anyone, you may not know because you haven't been here for as long, but I think, maybe you all, I, I don't know, so many people have come in and out. Has the city done business with WLH Productions before?
The first time that I see in the system was around about July of last year.
And, and, and who, who requisitioned to that?
I don't recall right offhand, but I know that we've made like three payments to that vendor.
Okay, well, I, I, I will help you, and, and Mr. Lefwitch can, can confirm. It was the previous mayor. The previous mayor, we've been using WLH Productions, so there was no direct payment to a city employee. The P cards of the entire city for 2021 are now available online at collegiatecures.com. And so you can look at all of them because they are all public record. This question is rhetorical, because I, I hear that, that we didn't want this to be a politically motivated attack. If that was the case, why did the city council issue a press release? Not once, but twice. Every time they referred someone to the district attorney, they issued a press release. They told the media, "We think criminal things are going on." They haven't been proven, but words like criminal and, and district attorney investigation were issued in press releases. I wish that Mr. Lefwitch were here because I'm sure that he would tell you that he did not write those on his own accord, but was directed by council. I want to clear something up. I never directed a member of city staff to do anything. I made a request of the procurement manager who approved the request. And then lastly, this meeting about my P card was on October 20th. Ms. Slaton Dixon, as of September 30th, had all receipts over $25 been submitted to you and had all monies that you requested to be repaid been repaid?
The expenditures for the tuxedo, as of September 30th, had been repaid through payroll deduction, but we are still missing, as I notified your LS, that we still have four receipts that are outstanding. One over $50, which is about $130. So we actually have four. dollars, so we actually have four that are outstanding that could not be located.
And, and when, and when did you make that notification?
I believe we notified him last week of those expenditures.
Because as, because of Septim, did, did we have a meeting, myself?
Yes.
You, myself, and the city manager before September 30th, and I said, "All the receipts are in," and at that, at that moment-
Right.
-you said, "All the receipts were in."
Right, according to what I, I knew, but then the financial analyst came back, and the purchasing analyst, excuse me, came back and said that we still had about four outstanding.
So, one of the reasons, Councilman Reeves, uh, it's so, these receipts are so late coming in, because multiple times in this process, we've been told, "We got everything we need, oh, wait, we need another receipt." So, that's, that's, that's how we are, are here. Um, I would just like to confirm this, Madam City Manager, I would ask that you confirm with the district attorney that more P-cards than these two are being investigated. Should you make that confirmation, is it your... Will it be your goal to have all P-cards shut off that are being investigated?
If there is confirmation from the DA that the investigation has expanded, I would consult with them, and based upon my interaction and conversations with them, it would be my professional opinion that we halt use of the other P-cards until the investigation is completed, yes.
Thank you, I have made multiple, multiple requests for that confirmation, I did receive a verbal confirmation, but district attorney's office, the ball is in your court if you would just confirm how many P-cards you are investigating so that the city manager can cut them off Councilwoman Willis.
Okay, so-
All right, uh, Councilwoman Raul, are you, you'll be af, you'll be, you'll be after Councilman Sebastian.
Ms. Sally Jones, who did, uh, that employee that went out and purchased the TikTok tuxedo videos, who did that employee report to, again?
That was the purchasing manager who reports to the finance director.
Okay, so, what I do have is, um, I, you know, I have a keen eye for this because I am an accountant by trade, uh, WLH Live Productions was not set up by the previous mayor, uh, it was set up, uh, in May, 2021. We have the email of the vendor application, um, that came from your office to set this person up as a vendor. Um, I also have the requisitions in my hand, uh, the first requisition was for the amount of, it was done on, uh, May 18th, 2021, it was in the amount of four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, it was entered in by your previous LS, it was approved by you, Mayor, on May 18th, and then it went up through the approval process. The second requisition was entered in by your LS, and then it skipped approval, and it was the former employee who no longer works for the city, uh, I'm sorry, the second, um, requisition was, uh, entered in by your LS, Mayor, and you approved it as the first approval by, on May 25th, it was for eight hundred dollars. Uh, and then the third requisition was submitted by your LS, uh, I won't call that person's name because, um, I just wouldn't, I don't think it's appropriate right now, but, uh, it skipped the first approval process and went straight to the, the procurement person who no longer works here, and that was for two thousand, three hundred dollars, and that totaled up to seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. We didn't look for this information, this information was presented to this entire council, and we asked the city manager to do her job and act accordingly. Now, one thing I do know about Madam DA is that she does not give verbal anything, and so, um, if anybody, I know nobody on this council is being investigated, uh, for P-card or procurement violations, because I confirmed with the finance director if it was any other council member who had violated policies. I know for one, since I've been sitting on this seat, in this seat, even when I didn't have staff, I know that the onus is on me to make sure that I comply with procurement and P-card policies. So, if I use my P-card to expand anything out of my budget, I make sure that receipts are submitted timely and accurately, I make sure I follow P-card policy. According to the finance director, she has had a pretty good experience with this current council, this current council, the six of us, and any questions that she has asked of us, we have answered and complied immediately. So, I'm going to yield, again, this is not politically motivated, we, we asked time and time again to pull this discussion off of the agenda, because we wanted the investigation to play out, we did not want to falsely accuse you, even though the information was brought to us, but you insisted on us having this discussion. To, one employee has been separated because of being implicated with your direction to use the P-card improperly, and another employee may be disciplined because they entered into a contract with this city and did business with you on your behalf of video productions. And I think that's sad, when you constantly accuse this council of corruption. Thank you.
Councilman Sebastian? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I did say, Dr. Raul, go ahead.
No, you said she would go after me, but I'll, I'll, I'll yield to the lady, I'm good.
I'm gonna pray for the sake of our city that this stops. It's unacceptable. I've sat here five years, every meeting is the same people who attack this council with misinformation, anybody can see it. It's unfortunate, and it's not the facts. Not only that, Mayor, how many times have you been in executive session since you've been elected?
I don't know. I would, I would, I would say, I would, I, I would say that under the advisement of my attorneys, you all know that there is an active lawsuit, and under the advisement of my attorneys, uh, I do not attend executive sessions or I leave executive sessions when I believe that we are violating the Georgia Open Meetings Act.
But you can't speak to that because you're not there, and that's when the most important business of the city is being done. And for you to weaponize your supporters, and I'm gonna call it that, it's unfortunate. At the end of the day, what will be the legacy that we stay divided for four years? This is not okay. This is not okay. And to speak and suggest that this council has done, in fact, we told the city manager, "Check all of our cards," we didn't just pick you, and you admitted yourself, out of a retreat, we said, "Mayor, take your time to get your stuff together." Months and months passed, and then you turn around and attack us like we're not the team players? That's not okay. It has to stop. Our citizens don't deserve this. We don't deserve it, we've sat here and taken these, I'm gonna call it abuse, from citizens who believe this misinformation. Never would I use the public's money in a way to sit up and hear a citizen say that, that's just unacceptable, I would never do that. I have a master's degree in city management, I would never do that. So, again, for it to continue, I just, I don't know, for those who support, don't, don't support blindly, check the research, you can watch every one of these meetings, if it don't add up, it's not right. It's just unacceptable, I just hope we can move forward, and, and I hope today it stops, I really do. The mayor, I, I, but at what point? I know, I mean, if we talk about it, you said it, fifteen, less than fifteen percent of the population is voting, what about the other eighty-five? They don't want to be represented in this way, they don't want to be on the news every week for something negative, they want us to do economic development, being quality growth, how is any of this going to help that? It's not okay. I didn't sign up for this.
Thank you, um, Councilman Raul, I was just gonna mention that I had a meeting with a potential investor today. I had another meeting last week with a county official, and I was told, you know, you guys have so much potential, but when people look in on you, they don't like what they're seeing. And I personally, I am personally embarrassed. Um, I traveled all over the world, even during the cityhood movement, when I was conducting my election, I had people from all over the world checking in on what was happening here, right? So, I can say that eye of the world is on this city, right? We, as the mayor said, if we're the blackest city in America, then so be it. Let's take that and make it proud, and not what we're doing right now. Mr. Mayor, many of my constituents, um, who voted for you, voted for me, and some have checked in, and they're not liking what they're seeing. It's the reasons why I would say to someone who said, "Man, no matter if you have lunch with the mayor every now and then, whatever, it's not gonna change," I said, "No, it's my duty, if the mayor calls and wants to meet, I want to meet." I was heartbroken, when because of this same P-card issue, I wanted, I had an investor to discuss a major development in the city, and the answer from you was, "I'm not gonna meet with you because you guys turned my P-card over to the DA." See, y'all want real truth, this is real truth right here, right? I still didn't make that a thing where I'm saying, "Oh, the mayor's my enemy." You are my mayor. I want to support you when you're good for this city, and I want you to support me as I do what I can for this city and for District Four particularly. I could say too, Madam City Manager, let me ask you this question, and I hate to put you on the spot, but the facts are just what they are. There were three new elected officials this term, would you say any one of us had an easy transition coming into the government? Because we had problems, all of us hiring staff?
Yes, no, it, it probably was not-
We all had problems getting furniture, right? We all, for whatever the reasons are, so, you know, when I hear the mayor said, "Well, I'm the mayor, nobody expected me to win, and so I'm here," I could say the same thing, right? I got the furniture for my office, I believe, less than two months ago. It's just, you know, on the last day, Ms. Slaton Dixon can tell you, on the last day of the financial year, she had to put in some human work just to help me straighten out the budget, because I even ended up, for some reason, with two profiles in our system, and there was this, just this bunch, we just weren't able to figure it out for a long time. I'm not blaming anybody, we are all humans, and errors happen, I get it, but I'm not gonna come back and say, "Well, they're fighting against me because they didn't expect me to be here," and some former mayor or former council member who's using staff against me. Listen, if that is the case, Jehovah Almighty knows what it is, but I don't want to sit here and come up and do these conspiracy, I want to get to the point where all we do, I said this on the day we got sworn in, and someone laughed at me, I said, "We need to be a boring city, stay out of the media, and let our work and our production speak for us." And I've endeavored to do that in the mighty District Four, and I'm hoping that the people of District Four who have seen the first ten months of my administration can say that you have represented us well. I just got an email from someone who's watching, saying exactly that. So, again, I don't want to come here and talk about all these conspiracy stuff, let us settle down on just the good work, let our work speak for us, we have so much opportunities here, my gosh, you know? And I don't want, I don't want to hear my residents say anymore, "I taught people I live in Fairburn because I'm embarrassed of the city of South Fulton." I hear that, and you know what? When we were out there in these streets, creating this city, one thing, the name South Fulton at one point became a rallying cry and something that we were proud of when we were doing that, about sixty percent of us. Let's get back there. I'm finished.
Thank you, Councilman Sebastian, I, I am compelled to clear up some misstatements, I want to start with the first. I did not, I did not tell you that I wouldn't meet with you because I was doing receipts, I said that I could not meet with you because I had a deadline to meet for the receipts. Every time I was given a deadline, I turned in those receipts by the deadline. After the deadline, I was then issued a new set of receipts that I needed, uh, to, to give out. I hear that people don't want the, they don't want us in the media for these things, people are saying that now, that we shouldn't be making the city look bad, if that is the case, stop doing press releases about referring people to investigations. Investigations haven't been concluded, people haven't been found guilty, but our council is writing press releases alleging criminal activity that has not been proven in a court of law.
Mr. Mayor-
Councilwoman, uh, I have the floor.
Yeah.
Dr. Raul, you asked me about attending executive sessions, and you said, um, that I need to be there because that is where the most important business of the city is done. Then you asked me what I want my legacy to be. I want my legacy to be this, that the most important business of the city is done in front of the city. We should not be back there, one and two and three hours every meeting, having executive session. Madam City Manager, I will ask you, you have worked for multiple cities, the amount of time that we spend every meeting in executive session, have you seen that in any other city that you've worked for?
No, sir, I have not.
Thank you. Um, and so, and so, the, the, the time, the time that I did a press conference, the investigation was concluded, check the dates, I gave a press conference on July 18th, the date of the Smyrna report is July 5th. It wasn't leaked to the public for three months until September, and everything that I said on those steps is verified in polygraphed statements by seven City of South Fulton police officers. But again, we can, we can stop, we, we can stop all of this, we can stop issuing, uh, press releases referring people for investigation, we, we, we can stop doing all of these things, but my, my legacy will be to have these conversations in public. If we can't talk about it in public, then we shouldn't talk about it. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. "That a lie gets halfway around the world before the truth has a chance to get its pants Winston Churchill did not have social media, and so, when he uttered those famous words, they were true. In today's social media world, a lie gets completely around the world multiple times before the truth can even open its eyes, let alone get its pants on. There are many things, whether you like it or not, that have to be discussed in executive session and have to be held in confidence. that have to be discussed in executive session and have to be held in confidence. Because having that information out damages the city, damages economic development, damages business, damages people's names, reputations, and lives. The majority of us try to do everything that we can to maintain confidentiality and to play by the rules. What is unfortunate is that it is not 100% participation. And so while we are trying to do the business of this city as mature, professional adults, the lies are running circles around us. Because the lies get put out and they get promulgated by people who have decided, for whatever reason, that they want to participate in spreading the lies. And so they fan out all over social media, spreading lies, attacking people, dragging people's names through the mud, abusing us. As Councilwoman Raul said, and make no mistake about it, it is abuse, which none of us signed up to take. And then you run to the media. There was media here in the room earlier. I see that they have gone now that, you know, it's time to talk about other things on the agenda. So now the media's not here to hear this part of the conversation. But I have no doubt that if it is not on the 11 o'clock news, it will be on the 5 a.m. news. None. Which will then, because people run to the media with their lies, be taken and fanned out all over social media as if it is fact to say, "See? The council is corrupt. The city is full of corruption." Not, and people don't realize that it is, if I may use an inappropriate word, a circle jerk of misinformation, promulgated by people who clearly have an agenda that nobody knows what it is, except to tear this city down. Councilwoman Sebastian, I have no, absolutely zero faith that it is gonna stop. Because the people who are involved in doing it don't have the ability or the capacity to stop. Because that requires walking in truth. And they don't have the ability to walk in truth. Because lies serve their purpose. It requires maturity, and they don't have the ability to be mature. Because maturity means being able to look in the mirror and look at people and say, "I was wrong." But they have to be right at all costs, even when being right means that it is going to tear down the city. So no, it's not gonna stop. Because stopping does not serve the purpose for which the circus is being performed. And so I know I hear a lot, you don't really, how I don't ever really say much. And there's a reason for that. Because number one, I'm not gonna participate in the circus. Because when everybody is in the mud, nobody can tell who the pig is. And that is not how my mother raised me, who is still living. And I will not embarrass her by stooping to the level of some of the people who are participating in this foolery. And if you want to recall me, do it. Because unlike some people, there, I have a life outside of this council. I have things that I can go do. I signed up for this because I believed in the City of South Fulton. More importantly, I believed in District 6. And most importantly, I believe that Old National Highway deserved better than what it was getting. And every morning I get up and I try to make that happen while I am also working my full-time job, while I am also caring for a sophomore in college, while I am also trying to get married, while I am also trying to write a dissertation.
That part.
So let me be clear that if you think you're gonna continue to come to this council meeting and stand and scream and shout at us and try to bully us because you've decided to play into and promulgate lives, let me speak for myself and say, "Have at it." Because I ain't never scared. And when this meeting is over, I'm going to go back to doing the business of this city. I'm gonna go back to not having a lot to say publicly. But rest assured that truth is truth. Facts are facts. And I don't care how many people repeat a lie, that doesn't make it true. And with that, I would like to move that we have an intermission because we are way over time. And I would like to join this sprite.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. It's been properly moved and seconded for an intermission. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a motion to have an intermission in recess. Councilmember Raul?
Yes.
Councilmember Gump?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis? Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
We are recessed at 7:37. What time should we return?
We have a 20-minute intermission schedule, so we'll be back here at 7:57, 7:58.